Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Apex Town Council. This is the September 18th, 2018 meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and with that, I'd like to introduce to you Pastor Rodney Finch of the Calvary Chapel out Center Street, right?
Correct.
And he's going to bring our invocation for us tonight.
And where do I stand?
Right there is fine.
Right here?
Yes, sir.
Now facing you facing up.
Right there is great. We'll have our eyes closed, so we won't know nothing different.
You're everything. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Clap your hands in your hearts, let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this day, a day that you've made. Lord, we thank you for your grace today. We thank you for your wisdom in the leaders of this community and guidance, Lord, that you provide to them. Lord, we thank you for the freedom that we have in this country to gather like this, to worship, Lord, to just have the freedom, Lord, to know you and to love you. We thank you for our military, Lord, that worked so hard to keep us safe and sacrificed so much. And, Lord, even as we think about the hurricane and, Lord, those that are affected, Lord, and we pray for them, we pray, God, you would give them grace and, Lord, that you would give peace to their hearts and anxiety, Lord, minimize the anxiety, those have lost so much. Lord, we pray that you would provide for them, and we thank you, Lord, for your protection, even in this community as well. And for the public safety workers, Lord, we think of them as well. Thank you for their efforts, and many who've come to our area to help us, we thank you for them. And now, we ask you, Lord, to give wisdom. We know that wisdom comes from you. Wisdom comes from obeying the Word of God and being doers of the Word of God, not just hearers only. They have your hand on this meeting. In Jesus' name we ask, if you agree, say amen.
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 Thank you very much, Pastor Rodney. At this time, I'd like to invite all of you, including the scouts of PAC 312, to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. I want to encourage you, if you missed the agenda, it is out on the podium outside. It looks like this, stapled white pieces of paper. Feel free to go grab one if you missed one. I don't mind if you step out and grab it and come back. Secondly, if you intend to speak tonight, either during public forum or during one of the public hearings that we have scheduled tonight, you will need to also grab the yellow sheet that gives you the guidelines, so that you need to become familiar with those. They include things like the three-minute guideline, right, and things about how many people and who you're representing. If you're going to speak, you do need to come sign one of these yellow sheets of paper here on the ledge in the next couple of minutes. The clerk will come collect those in a few minutes, so if you miss your opportunity, well, that moment has passed you by. At this time, I will now move on to presentations. We have our first and only presentation tonight. This is for the Peak City International Film Festival for 2018. And I will read this, and then I will invite Mr. John Demers and, I think, Kaya Black. Are you going to come up as well? All right, very good. Whereas the Peak City International Film Festival Take Four is an international film, TV, and music and production competition specifically for producers of family-friendly content, and whereas the annual Peak City International Film Festival will be held in the town of Apex, North Carolina from September 21st to September 22nd, 2018, and whereas the Peak City International Film Festival seeks to motivate the creative talent and business skills of producers and directors, providing the festival to convey the passion of storytelling through the motion picture arts and sciences, and whereas the Peak City International Film Festival allows stories and music for family members of various ages in TV, film, both features and short productions, as well as music videos, to inspire us and to provide networking opportunities for those in development, production, and distribution. Now therefore, I Lance Olive, Mayor of the town of Apex, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim September 22nd, 2018, as Peak City International Film Festival Day, and urge all citizens to participate in this event. And I will sign it as Mr. Demers and Mr. Black, if you all want to come on up.
And Tim Bell, our producer of the event?
Yeah, come on. Bring him, yes. I'll come down there with you.
I'll present this to you here. I don't know if you brought a photographer with you, but we'll show everybody.
He's standing up here with us.
That's all right. Oh, very good, all right.
But that's all right. We will get one, and we thank you. And do we have that three-minute video queued up? Can you, I looked and I couldn't find it. We have a synopsis of the last three festivals. It's within the three-minute rule?
Yes, sir, sure.
So we'll make sure we stay with that.
Wonderful.
And we'll let that play, and we'll sit back. We'll keep the three-minute rule.
Welcome to the Peak City International Film Festival. You are all very lucky to have a film festival here in your city that honors people that are making family-friendly films.
When you have the opportunity to choose between a blockbuster and a good family film, choose the family film and go see it a couple of times, because that's going to help the filmmaker.
God bless you all. Keep dreaming the dreams. Keep making the magic happen. Thank you.
We flew from Melbourne via New York to here, and it's been an incredible trip. And I have to say, this is just beautiful icing on the cake, so thank you so much.
The winner is unbridled Christie McGlothlin.
Wow. So this is unexpected. I'm shocked, and that, like, very sudden, she...
Mikey, we hope we'll see you guys Friday and Saturday.
Thank you. All right, thank you. And we'll now move to the consent agenda in the agenda in front of you. Consent agenda is typically enacted by a single motion, and it's considered to be non-controversial. If there is any item, however, that a council member wishes to remove and talk about later, they certainly can do so. With that, I'll check with the town manager. Are you aware of any changes to consent?
Yes, sir.
All right, with that said, I'll ask if there is a motion on the floor?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion to approve the consent agenda? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, consent agenda passes, and just like that, we're at page three. Did you blink? This is the part where we set our regular agenda, so I'll again ask the town manager, are you aware of any changes to the printed agenda?
No, sir.
All right, not hearing any, I'll ask council, are there any changes or is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, the regular agenda is set. We now move to public forum. This is a time where we get to hear from you if you have signed up on the public forum sheet. If you want to bring me that one first, then we'll go ahead and do that one, then we'll get to the others. Public forum is a chance where we give the public an opportunity to speak to us. Nobody on there? All right, very good. However, we'll open the public forum and close the public forum with no one having signed up. Moving right along here, public hearing number one. So now we're in the public hearings. This is public hearing number one, a rezoning consideration number 18 CZ 19 for 121 acres. Sarah Rayfield is presenting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
All right, perfect. Public hearing number one, rezoning case 18 CZ 19, Cash Corporate Center, located at 2100 Production Drive. So I'll just orient you here with the site. We're looking in this area here. This is the existing site, C-55 here to the west, Pinnacle Park here to the north, Lufkin Road, there is the golf course here over to the east. And I'll just quickly point out, this here is the parcel, the subject parcel. This guy is not the subject parcel. This is an already developed commercial site, so I just wanted to clarify that. The total acreage for the site is 121.31 acres. It is currently zoned light industrial. The proposed zoning is light industrial conditional zoning. The 2030 land use map recommends industrial employment uses for this area. Back to the site here. The subject property is located south of Burma Drive, Burma and Production Drive, east of Lufkin Road, and north of Jesse Drive. Maybe extension down here. It is currently vacant and wooded. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on April 30th, 2018. That full report is in your staff report. Again, the 2030 land use map identifies the property subject to this rezoning as industrial employment. The proposed rezoning to light industrial conditional zoning is consistent with that land use classification. And we move on to those conditional zonings. The full list of permitted uses and limitations is in your report. They are industrial-type employment, government services, transportation facility, medical, dental offices, business offices, research facility, laboratory, wholesaling, microbrewery and distillery. Those are just some of the uses that are on there. And then in regard to the conditions, I will read each of those out. There are five. First is that ephes cornices and parapet trim may be used. Ephes and stucco shall not be used within four feet of the ground and shall be limited to 25% of each building facade. Number two, the front facade and any facade that phases a collector street shall be masonry. Number three, the developer shall dedicate 30 feet of public right-of-way along the southern property line for future construction of Pristine Water Drive in accordance with the Apex Transportation Plan, which you will see more about that later this evening in the presentation. And number four, no buffer shall be required along major and minor collector streets. And number five, a continuous 10-foot multi-use path within the public right-of-way or 10-foot greenway within a 20-foot public greenway easement shall be constructed from Burma Drive at the northern property boundary to Future Production Drive at the southern property boundary. Planning staff recommends approval of 18 CZ 19 with the conditions as offered by the applicant. Approval of the rezoning is reasonable because the proposed light industrial conditional zoning district is consistent with the industrial employment land use classification on the 2030 land use map. The proposed rezoning is also reasonable and in the public interest because it will allow light industrial uses to develop consistent with existing light industrial development in the area. The proposed rezoning also provides conditions that will maintain the character and appearance of the area and provide the flexibility to accommodate the growth in population, economy, and infrastructure consistent with that contemplated by the 2030 land use map. I will be happy to answer any questions at this point.
All right, and before we take questions for Ms. Rayfield, let me just ask real quickly, number one is a rezoning, I'm looking at you, Brian, sorry. Number one is a rezoning, number two is annexation. Should we likely consider the annexation with the rezoning, or does it not require? Normally, we, if it's the same parcel, we annex before we rezone, right?
I'm sorry, ETJ.
Oh, it's in the ETJ, so it's not required in this case. Gotcha. Okay, all right, so, okay, all right, very good. I was going to try to see if we could double up on our public hearings on this one, but...
We're getting it, we come first.
Pardon?
We're getting it, we come first.
All right, we'll do the rezoning first. All right, thank you for the clarifications. All right, with that, let me open up to council, see if there's any questions for Ms. Rayfield.
Is Pristine Water Drive or the future of Pristine Water a major or minor collector?
I believe major collector. Is it, or, no? Is it minor? Okay.
Yes, minor. So I was just looking at the condition number four. I guess you guys thought it was sufficient to put number four in there to have no buffer along that? What was the thought?
So if I, so that internally, there's more flexibility that can be provided depending on the ultimate end user or users, and that was the intent of that condition?
And does the greenway, the public greenway easement, does Middle Creek Greenway master plan go through this? Is that what that is, or is this a separate greenway easement, the last condition?
Yes, Middle Creek Greenway.
Okay, so it's meant to be a part of that same system? Okay.
I too have some problems with the no buffer situation. I just think of McGregor Industrial Park over here with huge buffers. I would think some sort of a toning down buffer along those major roads would be something we'd want to do to keep kind of the quality look of the whole thing. I mean, if you're going down the street and there's no trees whatsoever and it's building, 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 you might as well be in New York.
It's not any perimeter buffers that would be impacted. It would be internal buffers on the street.
If I may, I'll count for it. It'll be the same as the existing Pinnacle Park.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, let's go to the public hearing, shall we? All right, so I'll open the public hearing, and seeing that no one signed up, I'll close the public hearing and refer the matter back to council for discussion or possible motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a couple of seconds.
You can get away. Thank you, you're so nice.
You get the next one then. All right. Any discussion on the motion for approval?
I just say maybe, Joey, make sure Amazon knows we're discussing this.
Hearing, no other discussion?
All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you. And now we go to public hearing number two, which is the same parcel, same planner presenting tonight. However, this is annexation.
Correct. So, public hearing number two, annexation case number 630, Cash Corporate Center. Again, all the information is the same, acreage zoning, same site, zoning.
All right.
I'll entertain if there are any other questions.
I do have a question, if it's okay. And I have not been in the Economic Development Committee meeting, so this might be a question for our director there. Is this in preparation of getting it ready to go to market, or do we have somebody in mind that we're looking to do all this rezoning and annexation for? Where are we at in the process of that?
So the annexation will be necessary because we want to provide town services to the site.
Okay.
And we've already pulled electric services to the site, and we also just received our North Carolina Site Certification Status Monday.
Oh, fantastic. Okay. Great, thank you.
All right, let's open the public hearing, and no one has signed up, so I'll close the public hearing and refer the matter to council for possible motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. You can give that to Brad, that's fine.
All right, the score is lawyer won.
There you go. It's not a competition, is it? Nope.
All right, discussion on the motion to approve? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. We now move to public hearing number three. This is for the rezoning application for the Culvert Street property, and we have Ms. Lufkin presenting.
Good evening. This is rezoning case 18 CZ 23, Culvert Street. It's within the Peakway and on the east side of downtown. This site is located at the southwest intersection of North Tunstall Avenue and Culvert Street. Tunstall, Culvert, and Center Street is here. The property is currently vacant. The property is currently zoned medium-density residential and is located in the small-town character overlay district. The applicant is proposing to rezone to medium-density residential conditional zoning. The 2030 land use map classifies the subject property as medium-density residential, and the proposed rezoning is consistent with that classification. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on June 28th, and a copy of the neighborhood meeting report is included in the staff report. The uses will be limited to single-family and accessory apartment. The maximum building height shall be 28 feet, and a five-foot public construction easement shall be provided from the existing right-of-way on Culvert and Tunstall Avenue for future construction of the public sidewalk. Planning staff can recommend approval because the proposed medium-density residential conditional zoning district is consistent with the land use map. The proposed rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest because it allows for a limitation on permitted uses and maximum building height to ensure future development is compatible with the surrounding single-family neighborhood. The planning board heard this item on their September 10th meeting and unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning with one recommendation. The planning board recommends that town council consider adding condition number one from the neighbors, which reads UDO section 2.3.9 Administrative Adjustments and 10.4.1 Non-Conforming Lots of Record Setback Reductions, as may be amended or recodified, shall not apply to this property. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Does the staff recommend that one too, at this point?
We don't have a recommendation on that one.
Could you elaborate on those conditions that planning board suggested?
That was, so administrative adjustments allows a setback reduction. The planning director can make a setback reduction by 10% as long as it meets five criteria. And then 10.4.1 is a non-conforming lot of record. And if it's a non-conforming lot, it can be, let me get the exact wording. It can be reduced not less than five feet, and the rear setbacks be reduced not less than 10 feet. And that's for non-conforming lots.
So, I'm sorry, what is a non-conforming lot?
If it does not conform to the current standards of the zoning district, it has to be in place by a certain date, then it can be, to allow the property to be developed.
Which are dimensions of a lot?
Yes.
Is that what that, okay, so it's non-conforming, and it doesn't meet the standard dimensions of the lot?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so which way would this house, the driveway be for this house? Have they, has that been determined, or is that a requirement in our UDO?
It would not be a requirement. It would, so a small-town character application would be submitted if someone would want to build a home on the lot, and we would review it at that time.
What does the staff suggest or the requirement for the sidewalk, future sidewalk? Is that on Culvert?
Along Tunstall and Culvert.
Tunstall, okay. Oh, on both sides there, okay.
I know there's some list of uses that Park Passive was not on there, and that was, we had an email about a resident wanting to limit it to Parks Passive, but I was wondering why at least it's not included in the uses, or why it was just the single-family home or uses.
I can answer that. I was directed by council at a prior meeting to include the residential uses and to include a height limitation, so that's all we included.
Okay.
Be headed on it.
Yeah, I want to, I would, we'll tend to add that on when we have discussions. So we've gotten this list of, the email from the resident talks about the setback, the non-conforming thing you're mentioning in the setbacks, and then asking about architectural standards, and I assume the planning board may have heard that same request, and can you explain about, was there any discussion at the planning board about the architectural standards application to this zoning?
I don't remember that being discussed.
Okay.
I think there's a height requirement, isn't that what we're working on?
Well, I looked it this up. The architectural requirements were more about the outlooks more than the height. But it said it was recommended for single-family not required in the UDO, which is, I think the request is to have it required. Anyway, I was wondering, yeah, the planning board did not discuss that part. Okay. And, okay, and the other thing was about, there's also the request about the two lot vehicles side by side in the parking lot, the driveway. So right now, the existing areas do not require to, a driveway to be side by side, but some are and some aren't, I guess, right? Is that your understanding?
There's no requirement that they be side by side. You can have a long driveway with two cars.
Okay. Okay, none of the lots have had a requirement before this, in this area at least?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
All right, let's go to the public hearing then. I'll open the public hearing. I've got two have signed up. First, Lisa Glover.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and I thank you. It's clear that, I know some of you have read the email that I sent last week, so I appreciate that. So, yeah, I do not object to the rezoning. I think that if you all are intent on selling the lot, and I see that that's later on in your agenda tonight, then absolutely I would like the rezoning with the conditions that you have on there so far. My request, though, is that additional conditions be considered and added to the case. And I ask that because it is a non-conforming lot. Assuming it's a lot of record, it would be non-conforming. You would not be able to create a lot that small today in the small-town character area if you had a larger parcel. So it's non-conforming, and it's oddly shaped, as you can see on the map. So, and I think the town, as the property owner here, as well as the regulator, has a higher responsibility to the community than your typical developer would coming in to see you for a rezoning. So I ask you to think about that as you make your decision tonight, that you are balancing competing interests here. I understand you probably want to sell the lot, perhaps make money, and that's understandable, but you've got to balance that against your responsibility as the town of Apex, to the community, especially to the neighbors who are close by to this lot. So I have requested that you consider restricting the use to the Park Passive use instead of allowing residential. This is a nice little oasis of green space in our neighborhood. It is small, so it will be hard to fit a house on there that doesn't completely overwhelm the corner, and I think today, all the residents enjoy it as a green space. And, you know, we're losing that downtown. Folks are coming in, they're finding lots that they can subdivide into smaller lots, they're using existing non-conforming lots, as on the other side of my property, and really maximizing their space so that they can increase their return on their investment, and that's understandable for a developer. But I ask that the town, you know, have different considerations in mind when making this decision. And the additional conditions, if you choose to keep it as a residential lot, address to the setback issue, because again, the three houses that were recently built next to us took advantage of that, those two provisions in the ordinance, to minimize their setbacks. And if you've driven past them, you see that they really do take up a very large proportion of the lot. And two of the houses have single-car driveways, I'll call them. The third house has kind of a double-loaded driveway where two cars can park side by side, and the houses that have the single-loaded driveways... that you are balancing competing interests here. I understand you probably want to sell the lot, perhaps make money, and that's understandable. But you've got to balance that against your responsibility as the town of Apex, to the community, especially to the neighbors who are close by to this lot. So I have requested that you consider restricting the use to the Park Passive use instead of allowing residential. This is a nice little oasis of green space in our neighborhood. It is small, so it will be hard to fit a house on there that doesn't completely overwhelm the corner. And I think today, all the residents enjoy it as a green space. And, you know, we're losing that downtown. Folks are coming in, they're finding lots that they can subdivide into smaller lots. They're using existing non-conforming lots, as on the other side of my property, and really maximizing their space so that they can increase their return on their investment. And that's understandable for a developer. But I ask that the town, you know, have different considerations in mind when making this decision. And the additional conditions, if you choose to keep it as a residential lot, addressed to the setback issue, because again, the three houses that were recently built next to us took advantage of that, those two provisions in the ordinance, to minimize their setbacks. And if you've driven past them, you see that they really do take up a very large proportion of the lot. And two of the houses have single-car driveways, I'll call them. The third house has kind of a double-loaded driveway where two cars can park side by side. And the houses that have the single-loaded driveways are having trouble parking and moving their cars. Their yards are so small, they can't actually, you know, back a car up and move one around if they've got folks who need to come in and leave at different times. It's leading to a lot of parking on the street. So those are our concerns with allowing single-family homes on non-conforming lots. And again, the town as the owner here has the opportunity to not create additional problems in downtown, but to really try to make this a nice spot for residents and neighbors. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Glover. Next is, I think, Janine Atogi. I'm sorry if I got that wrong.
Hello. Yes, I have a tendency to agree with Ms. Glover, everything that she has.
Name and address for your reference.
I am Janine Atogi. I am at 113 Lake Meadow Drive. Our back property is across the street on Tunstall from this property. We are at the corner lot there. And as such, I do suggest that it be a public park or I think the Keiths and Ms. Glover have taken care of the lot in its current condition. And I would think they should be offered the chance to purchase that property if anyone were to purchase that property. My request, if the property is developed, I would request that parking totally be contained onsite or in church parking lot and not on road or utility easement. For the sidewalk, I'd like to eliminate as much impervious surface as possible. I would like to request firmly packed crushed aggregate sidewalk on property. I also wondered if you all had done a traffic study. There is a lot of congestion in that area. And as Ms. Glover has stated, the three large houses that are 36 foot tall do not have adequate driveways. And they wind up parking on private property and causing friction between the neighbors. I suggest that a 12-foot road right-of-way be considered for North Tunstall on this property if it is developed, because on Tunstall across the street, the property goes all the way to the road. There is no road right-of-way, just utility easement. We've heard testimony from the neighbors that there are problems with school buses getting through, with the people parking on the streets, and also that construction's traffic was there. And we would like to be assured that there is some type of mitigation. Like to have the standard house setbacks as Ms. Glover had stated. I would like to also ask for additional sound curtain to curtail the noise pollution during construction. And if not, I'd like to have the construction hours curtailed. Because this is in a working neighborhood, it's not new development. Also, I'd like to see significant back deck and front porch. Roof efficaciously angled to aid traffic visibility at the intersection. I'm not convinced that it won't impede traffic at that.
Thank you, Ms. Atogi.
Through the intersection.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we have reached the end of our list and I'll close public hearing. Refer the matter back to council. I think there were some things we heard during public comment that may warrant some discussion. Some of them, I know, parking on the street, I personally have found that a difficult situation. But of late, it seems that the car's been, the one we all know about has been parking further off the street. But I'm not sure that really solves the problem when they have 100-foot long driveway. But that's, to me, I see that as a different matter, parking or non-parking. If not parking on the street is required, we would need to work with the town manager and the police to notice the street appropriately as a no-parking street. As to sidewalks, I know that planning staff have a pedestrian plan where sidewalks are planned. So I understand there will be at some point sidewalk where those are marked. I think the issue before us today, as we're looking at this, is not to impose any further. And we've already, we have a 28-foot height restriction, which addresses the wow, it's so tall for that tiny little lot problem. So we saw that and staff have brought that to us. Also, the construction easement. And as those two are, and I just wanted to get clarification from Ms. Lofton. Our staff report does say staff recommends the approval with those conditions, correct? Okay, so to follow on on Councilman Jensen's question, I believe with, maybe it was somebody else's. Was it yours, Councilman Moyer? I forgot, somebody asked about, does staff recommend approval? Maybe I've forgotten now, I didn't write it down.
Does staff recommend adding that condition?
Right, so the, so the planning board recommendation, staff hasn't taken a position, right? That's, I just want to be clear on that. Staff hasn't taken a position on that one, okay. With that, and I didn't mean to have a little monologue there, but I kind of wanted to put a little frame around, around this. The town found itself, just for those who know, the town found itself in an opportunity where we had this parcel, we kind of ignored it for 75 years or whatever it's been, since Culvert Street bent to meet Tunstall and aligned with the other street rather than hit on a 90. We had an inquiry to purchase the lot. So as everyone knows, or maybe you don't know, but just to be clear, town government doesn't pick and choose who buys it. We put it up for sale if that's how we want to surplus a piece of property. And then there is a very open and transparent and fairly slow bidding process so that anybody who wants to bid has an opportunity to bid. So that process will be very open and transparent should we move forward with this. With that said, I think I've put some frame around it. Let me just open it to council for any discussion that might lead us towards a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just point out one thing discussing with Amanda. We talked about adding use of a park that would likely require this to be renoticed, the governor changing the use and adding use to it, not with this park in original.
All right, so we'll take a note of that if the conversation starts to head that direction, thank you.
So just clarify that any use requires a new notice, even if it's one that's low impact like that?
Any additional?
Any additional use? Okay.
What was your thought about adding the, adding the Park Passive?
Well, I think limiting the park would be the, obviously the scenario that would make it so that it never would be built on. I'm not sure if adding that use would actually, if the person bought it and didn't want to develop it, wanted to put like a community garden or some kind of thing on there. Can you clarify that? So do they need it to be, if they want, say, community garden, that use, I'm not sure that's the best use or not. But would that require Park Passive to be a use? Or can, would those kind of things be kind of allowed because they're not really building a building necessarily?
The only community gardens we have have been set up as a secondary use. I don't believe we have any that are the primary use. I think the closest use classification would be a passive park or an active park maybe. I mean, you're actively doing things there.
But would it prohibit doing something like that? If it wasn't included?
If it was included?
Yeah. If it was not?
If it was not included?
Yeah.
And it was a residential property?
Yeah.
Purchased by a private?
It can be a garden, I don't know, I mean, I suppose anyone that owns a private property could have other people come to their property, I don't, I don't know.
If it were that kind of garden, if it were formalized, then they would have to go through all the parking and all that other stuff, which is a challenge on such a small lot.
Yeah.
I would say we'd probably add a whole new section about community gardens because I don't think you need parking for those typically. If you have those, people walk to them.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
We'd end up adding another use to the UDO if we wanted to do that.
I think it's a good question because we don't know who's going to buy this. Maybe the neighborhood would want to buy it as a group.
We don't, yeah, we don't know. So we should, we should not assume who will do what at this stage. We should make sure that if we're surplusing it, it has uses that are appropriate for that parcel.
And how about adding containing parking on-site, so to contain at least two vehicles?
Is that not already implied? I would think that's already implied.
Sorry, we were looking at the gardens.
So there was a comment earlier tonight about adding conditions to have parking on the property. But I think that's already implied, I don't believe we can.
It's required, there are two parking spaces required on the property.
I think the question was, should you have the driveway double width so that there is not the problem of people stacking their cars and having to get out and then parking on the street? Is that not what the question was?
I don't know. Is that, that's different from not being off-site?
That is different from not being off-site. But it is to ensure that it is functionally useful for two cars to be there and.
We've never imposed that on anyone before. Single-wide driveway is allowed in residential use.
Okay.
Yeah.
I understand.
And the ones on Tunstall, they're very deep. And they've got garages behind their house.
I under, I under, yeah. The question was with the stacking.
Yeah.
And I guess, yeah, we haven't, so I guess that isn't a thing that we need to add to this in that case.
I think if, if the lot can contain two vehicles, I think that's a reasonably.
Yeah, I hear you.
That's a reasonable.
We're still here.
Requirement, yeah.
As an aside to this, do we need to address parking along that street?
I think that we can ask the town manager to come back to us with something on parking along the street. So as a separate matter, whether or not Tunstall specifically is a fairly highly-trafficked street, which over my lifetime here in Apex had stop signs added just simply to slow down the flow on Tunstall. I mean, there's a couple of four-way stops in there where there used to not be many years ago. But I think that's a separate matter. And I think certainly, if there's no objection, we'll just do that as a quick aside as have the town manager look into whether making Tunstall no parking street, at least until it's.
Just Tunstall, so not ignoring the rest of the grid streets.
I didn't say just, but let's start with that first and see if we can get consensus on that.
I agree, because in going through all the concerns and questions from the neighbors, I mean, that's one of the things they raised. And we did say that in response, that we would put them, could put them in touch with the planner who's working on the transportation plan. So we've already said that in response to need to do it.
Okay. So, sounds like no objection?
Because we said we will do it.
We can, we can look at it.
All right, so that's on your radar?
Sure.
All right, no, so.
Question is number two.
Following that, then the thing, the question would be Culvert, right? That's still a question in your head?
Well, and we receive complaints, infrequently, but we do receive other complaints of people parking on the grid streets. And we receive complaints of people parking in other neighborhoods around town where, you know, car parks on the left side, car parks on the right side, even with curb and gutter.
Right.
And it obstructs the road.
And there, and I think there, there are some distinctive differences in some of the, some of the recent behavior where 90% of the car is on the narrow ribboned street, right? That causes a major problem. If the car is 100% off of the paved asphalt, that's much less of a problem if it's not also blocking visibility. I think those are different matters. And I think, I'd like to maybe take those, I don't want to shift gears too hard on this, but if we can take that offline and maybe we can think through that to figure out what can possibly be done.
Sorry, I know it diverted a little bit.
Yeah, no, that's okay, that's okay. So let's, if we could, we'll pull it back to the topic at hand, which is the rezoning here. Are there any other comments? I'm sorry, you had the floor.
I was just going to say, I, you know, I don't think we're in a hurry on selling this. So I think, you know, going back and renoticing and adding Park, Passive, Active, maybe both to this is not a bad idea.
So, one of the things I remember, and I'm going to refer to town manager about the, whether or not Park use is, from a zoning perspective, is that a difficult thing? Or is that, is it simply a matter of whatever zone is, whatever use is allowed on it? I mean, would it be practical or?
It's a small, from the, from the public park standpoint, we evaluated that when we, when we even came to the council and asked, would you consider surplusing it? We looked at all public uses, including the park. And it was just too small, and then you need to provide protection for people using it, parking, yada, yada, yada.
So in theory, a private park is not a problem?
Well, yeah, as long as there's, you know, again, if there's a parking provision and there's, you know, provided for the safety of the people using it.
So there would be, just like residential, there would be site plan considerations if someone were to want to do something other than nothing, right? Nothing clearly is not a problem. It can continue to be simply as-is and/or maintained with no improvements. Is there, so I want to ask the question just kind of openly, and this is not leading, but what is, what is the use of a park designated for Park use if it's privately owned? Would that be, is that where you're thinking, community? I'm looking back at you because you were bringing this, community garden kind of concept? That's privately-owned property?
Yes. I was thinking, I'm not sure this is even realistic, but in theory, they could sell off or rent, I guess, or lease whatever, 10 by 10 parcels for people to have their own little garden. And they, I'm not sure if that use would be allowed if we had it as just single-family, whatever we have it, if people want to do it that way. I mean, it's not really, it would probably be a raised bed type situation where it wouldn't be a lot of, it wouldn't be a structure. So I'm not sure.
Just urban agriculture?
Yeah. I'm not sure, I mean, that's just a theory, but I just don't want to prohibit. I mean, I guess they'd come back to us and ask for that to.
The purchaser could come back and say, you know, I don't want to build a house here, I want to do a community garden.
Yeah.
At that point, the council could then have known it.
That's true.
Right. Which is why I'm okay proceeding tonight about that.
Okay, all right.
Okay, here, here and then I'm okay.
Actually, that makes sense, so I appreciate that.
That was thoughtful, thoughtful. All right, any other, you had the floor, Councilman?
Okay. Any other conversation?
I feel strongly in agreement about the non-conforming lot situation and the architectural, the required, the recommended being required. And my reason is, this is on the corner like this in a highly-visible area. I think those two things would definitely mitigate the negative impacts. And I'm not sure it would, how much it precludes whatever they want to build on it. But I think those would be, minimizing impacts is important to me in this one because it's just so close to everything else, the road and the other houses.
Okay, so if I could clarify that. So in the planning board recommendation on page two where it says, "Planning board recommends town council add condition one," that one?
Right, condition one strongly, and also the architectural standards in UDO 6.3.1. I read through those and those are nice. And I think it would be helpful for this lot to have, that was required as well.
Okay, all right. Diane, do you feel like you have the understanding of that, those conditions already?
Well, I wanted to point out that the administrative adjustment is an after-the-fact approval of a minor issue with the way the house has been built. We have houses that sometimes the surveyors don't get it right and they are an inch over the setback line. If you make it mandatory that they cannot get an administrative adjustment, someone could have an entire house built that would need to be torn down. And that's, there's a little relief valve in the UDO, it's very small. It's not the same as the non-conforming section. So I would be careful, just based on the way it was worded from both planning board and the neighbor, that it precludes not only a preemptive setback reduction, it includes, if there's an accidental encroachment of the setback line, that they actually have to knock down part of the house so that it's not encroaching over the setback.
And that's 10%, you said?
It's 10%.
So if it's 10 feet, that means that they're one foot over, there's leeway, basically?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I strongly, okay, maybe I should clarify. The non-conforming lot part of that is what I feel strongly about, less so the administrative adjustment part. I think that's a little too rigid. think that's a little too rigid.
So you're asking staff to amend the application and have it go back through the whole process? Is that what I'm hearing? I'm not real sure what you all want us to do.
Adding a condition is what I thought you were trying to do.
But you want to add the use as well?
No, I think we're abandoning, we're gonna-
Just the conditions for the architectural section to be mandatory, and the non-conforming lot section would apply. So those are additional conditions that the applicant's offering?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, and we can do that tonight with the conditions.
Okay. So, that's more restrictive than the original?
Yes.
So you would be able to vote tonight on that if you want to?
And I'll tell you, I agree with adding those, especially because we don't know who's going to bid on this, in total. We know we have suspicions of a few bidders, but, you know, it could be somebody from out of town as a builder and come in. So we want to keep those restrictions as accurate as possible, I guess is what I'd say. I agree with that.
Do you want to make a motion? Sounds like we're getting close to that.
Okay. So, I make a motion to approve the rezoning with the conditions of involving the non-conforming lots and architectural standards in the UDO. Any more?
In addition to the-
In addition to the height one and the, yeah.
Okay. Conditions as written and submitted by staff here?
Correct.
Numbers one and two.
And they already dealt with the transportation issue?
Yep.
Going to look at it.
Yeah, that's side, right.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve with those conditions. Discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I would like to say that, I mean, we'll go through the process to sell this property, and it's open to anybody that wants to put a bid on it. And you can keep it the way it is. I mean, you know, it's open to bid for anybody, so.
And the town isn't required to sell it if we decide that the bid isn't high enough?
That's what we've been informed by the town staff, yes. All right. Thank you, councilman. Any other discussion? Not hearing any. I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. And thank you. And just before we move on, since that one got a little hairy, I want to just check real quick with staff, are you okay understanding the conditions?
With you, I'm gonna use the neighbor's wording. For the architectural standards in UDO Section 6318 shall apply to any development of the property. And then the other one would be UDO Section 10.4.1, non-conforming lots are record setback reductions as may be amended or recodified shall not apply to this property. Is that acceptable?
Right.
All right. All right, accepted. All right, very good. So now we move on to public hearing number four. This is rezoning case 18 CZ 25, and Ms. Dutton Meyer is presenting.
Good evening. This is rezoning case 18 CZ 25 for zero Hudson Avenue. The property is located in this general area in downtown Apex. The property to be rezoned is located on the east side of Hudson Avenue and between Holloman Street and West Moore Street. You have Sun Trust Bank to the north and Holland Jewelers to the east over here. The property, as well as adjacent properties, are located in the small-town character overlay district. The property is currently zoned office and institutional. The adjacent zonings are to the north, office and institutional, to the east and south, mixed office residential retail conditional zoning, and to the west is high-density, single-family residential. The applicant is proposing to rezon this property to mixed office residential retail conditional zoning. The 2030 land use map identifies the proposed site as medium-density residential and office employment. The proposed rezoning is generally consistent with the land use map designation. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on June 19, 2018, and a copy of the neighborhood report is in your pocket. The applicant has proposed a limited number of land uses to ensure the property will be developed consistent with the surrounding residential and non-residential uses. A full list of the proposed uses are included on page two of the staff report. The permitting uses proposed for this property are single-family, bed and breakfast, office, business or professional, accessory apartment, duplex, and studio for arts. The applicant has agreed to provide architectural conditions previously included in the UDO, but since has been removed by state statute. A full list starts on page two of the staff report, including some changes proposed by the applicant. The second zoning condition is being proposed as written. Due to the constrained depth of the lot, we propose that the width of the facade shall not be wider than 1.65 times the depth of the principal structure. Approval of the rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest because the proposed mixed office residential retail conditional zoning district excluded retail uses, making their request consistent with the uses found in medium-density and office-employment land use designation. The limited number of permitted uses allows for consistency and compatibility with the adjacent mixed office residential retail land uses and the character of the small-town character district. Planning staff can recommend approval of conditions as offered by the applicant, and the planning board review this item during their September 10th meeting and unanimously recommend approval of the rezoning as offered by the applicant. I'm here to answer any questions, as well as the applicant in the audience.
All right. Any questions for staff first?
I have a philosophical one. So, we got an email about some of the architectural standards in the small-town character were not typical in that area versus the rest of town. And I was wondering, I know when towns kind of grow up and they build different styles, because the different periods had different styles, and so I was wondering, is there a benefit, the staff always a benefit to kind of having very much consistent housing in an area versus falling within the small-town character but not, like, I was thinking about that modern house in Raleigh, that one that was kind of controversial but also kind of cool looking, I thought. And so, that, houses built in the 20s are different than houses built in the 50s and now, and so there's a value in having a little more flexibility. But the neighbor, the resident was asking to keep it all kind of consistent. So I was wondering, does staff have a feeling about consistency versus within a framework? I thought that's kind of a draw.
From the planning perspective, is that your context?
Yeah, as far as-
The applicant has offered the standards as a condition to be required, and based on testimony at the planning board, the neighbors were interested in seeing that as well.
The small-town character but limited to what they were suggesting is more common features. Is that right?
It doesn't need to be exactly the same, if that's what you're asking. There's not-
There's not a need to replicate the-
Short structures.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
Duplex, does that fit in? I guess I had that question.
What'd you say?
A duplex. Duplex seems-
That is one of the uses permitted in the mixed office residential retail conditional zoning.
But can a duplex fit there?
Yeah, that's a question. Well, it is a better decision.
You make the unit small enough, or if you do flats, bottom floor, top floor, I don't see why you couldn't do a duplex.
I think that's a, that's a site plan question.
Yeah, in that case.
All right, if there are no other questions for staff, then I'll, none? All right, I'll invite the applicant. Mr. Cox, you're the applicant. Normally, the applicant gets nine minutes, if you want it, to make a presentation or say anything. Do you have anything you would like to say?
I don't have any comments about it. I'm willing to answer any questions if there are any.
All right. All right, well, let me see if there are any, and if so, we'll have you come up. Are there any questions for the applicant? All right, not seeing any. I will open the public hearing and refer to the sign-up sheet. I see Mr. and Ms. Grimes are both signed up, so which one of you would like to come up? You've got three minutes shot. Ms. Grimes, all right, come on up.
You got my email. Are you ready?
I read them, yeah.
Although I'm not sure you agree. I'm going to try to be as quick as possible. If you can turn to the little handout, do y'all have this handout? Was that passed to you? Look at this little drawing that my husband did, if you don't mind. Do you see, I sent you over the storm, I guess you might say, an email that had pictures of the houses. I didn't bring those again. But if you'll look and see, the houses are numbered there, and my house, which is on South Salem Street, is number four, and the subject lot is near mine. This is mine, and this is the vacant lot. And these are the surrounding houses. We also have a doctor's office and a bank that surround, and then there's the vacant lot across the street from the subject lot. What I am asking, and my neighbors are also asking, all of the people that we visited, we talked with all of our neighbors, and they all want any house that's built here to conform not to any specific standard, but that it has features that are similar to our houses. And so I made a little list of the things that are similar to our houses, and I let you know features that were recommended by the planning board that do not exist in our houses. They're all framed, they're not brick, they all have period windows. The windows are all different. Some of them are three over one, some of them are two over two, some of them are one over one, but they're all period windows, well-framed, and lovely additions to the home. And they all, except for one, have a nice front porch, which adds a lot of character to it. And there was some concern about whether or not this lot was big enough for a front porch. And so, I took the time to draw a little picture for you, if you don't mind looking at it. That's this one here. This is the lot with the house on it. Okay. And what it shows is that they can have not a back porch, which they would like to have, but they could have a side porch, as well as a front porch, and a driveway, and a garage, and a really big house, actually. One floor would be like 1,500 square feet. If they have two stories, it would be over 3,000 square feet.
Thank you, Ms. Grimes. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
All right.
At this time, I often will ask the applicant as well if there's any final thought before we go into deliberation. Do you have anything you'd like to comment or add? No? All right, very good. Real quickly, your profession, sir? Okay, so understanding the house features is what you do. Right, all right, very good. At this time, I'll close the public hearing or further matter to council for conversation leading to a possible motion.
So I'd like some clarification on some of the, I guess, restrictions or requirements of the small-town overlay character district. If somebody was to build a house on this, what does that, the overlay district provide from an architectural standards?
I think page three in the report talks about some of those things.
There's not much left in there. It's like garage dominance, that's about it. Most of the items were removed in 2015 due to changes in state law. The section that's in there are recommendations, and so when we have rezonings in the small-town character area, we ask the applicants if they're willing to include those architectural recommendations as requirements in their rezoning. So it's, there's not a whole lot we can require on single-family homes. And we can read them from the UDO if you would like, just a couple of items.
And the list of conditions here is word-for-word what's in the UDO recommended?
Yes, it is. There are minor modifications. Are you aware of what they are?
Yes, please.
Okay. So the list that's provided in the application, the staff report, that is what was provided by the applicant. So I'll go from what was in the UDO to what was provided by the applicant, and what's different per section, to make it easier. Okay. So the original list that was provided from staff was, that was in the UDO for the architectural features. The only thing different that, so originally, the predominant porch is overall 75% of the front facade. The applicant requested over 50% of the front facade for the predominant porch. So for the brick, for the all-brick facade, the applicant requested predominantly brick facade.
Predominantly brick versus all brick, what is that?
That means they can also add different-
They're like a percentage of brick? What is predomin, like what is predominantly? How do you guys define that? 75%?
It's the standard dictionary definition, which is more than 50%.
So it could be 51%, and it meets that definition?
Correct. It just depends on the ratio.
And the UDO is all?
It just says all brick facade, correct. Then the rest of these I'm going to be listed are provided from the applicant. Reced entry, prominent gables and cross gable, steeply pitched roof, parapet walls and gables, and those were one from what was from the residential, oh, sorry, the architectural feature portion. Regarding the decorative features, in the UDO, it says residential structures shall have four or more of the following features. The applicant has asked for residential structures shall have three or more of the following decorative features. So from going from four to three. They have, the applicant has requested, or has recommended, to get rid of the decorative shake from the original UDO architectural features, and add decorative siding, as well as a decorative chimney. So the rest of what was listed in the staff report is the same as what was in the UDO for that. The roof section and the facade section is still the same, as well as the windows, entry, and material section. The only thing that they have also asked to take out from this is the section in the UDO that says, "The sides facing a budding street, all sides of a principal structure that face an abutting public street shall have an architectural and decorative features." So they were asked to remove that as well, because they're-
So, Ms. Lauren, did staff recommend approval for this?
Yes, as offered by the applicant.
Okay, so, we have a UDO requirement in our small-town character overlay district for a reason. Staff and council at the time voted that into place, thinking that was necessary to require development that happens in this area to meet these requirements. Why did, what was the reasoning staff recommended approval with all these adjustments and variances from the UDO?
I can answer that, and I did want to clarify. It's not 100% brick, it's high-quality materials. There's many materials that qualify under high-quality materials. It's not all brick for that particular one. The other issue is that we can, the council, we can only recommend, and the council can only approve what the applicant has offered. What they have offered is much more than would be required under a standard zoning, and so it's better than what we could have gotten, and so it's very close. And they've actually offered brick, which is not a requirement. It could be all hardy plank. It could be all hardy plank.
In the small-town character overlay?
Yes.
I thought I was just told differently.
I know, I was making clarification, Lauren misspoke.
How about, I mean, there's a couple of different, you read us like eight different variances, I believe, from the small-town character overlay district to what is being offered?
Well, they're not requirements in the UDO, they're recommendations. And as recommendations, there are things that could potentially be just as good offered by an applicant. We can't require any of these things. The fact that they've offered most of them, and equivalent, and even in the case of brick, a better requirement, we're fine with that.
Mr. Moyes?
Go ahead, yeah.
So I was reminded, when we were speaking about sort of what happened in 2015. And so I think that's what you're alluding to. So that was, I think, Senate Bill 25. So it guides our ability to what we can do, and our aesthetics, our design aesthetic control. But like you said, it doesn't mean that we can't ask for things. So there are things that the applicant can then voluntarily consent to. And so I guess for me, if there are things that the neighbors are asking for to be a little more conforming, or more similar to what they have, we can ask the question. So if there are things that we heard about tonight, that we can ask the applicant, and he can, they can voluntarily consent, or they cannot. But state law says we cannot make it as a condition. We just, I mean, it's just, it's out of our hands. 2015, that was, that was that. And despite our pushing back against that bill, we lost on that one.
So I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, you had mentioned there was, I guess, four things that characterize something, and they offered three of them? Is that, could you restate that?
Yes. So for the second category, it's decorative features. And originally, in 6.3, it read residential structures shall have four or more of the following features. And then what was provided said residential structures shall have three or more of the following decorative features. And then, do you want me to read what they provided, or...
I'm curious, yes, thank you.
Okay, so the list that was provided to me from the applicant is decorative siding, decorative porch railing slash posts, shutters, decorative functional air vents on roof or foundation, trimmed windows, recessed windows, decorative slash period windows, decorative brick or stone, decorative gables, decorative cornices, decorative chimney, or tin or metal roofs. So that was what was provided from the applicant. And would you like me to read what was provided in 6.3, to get a comparison?
Please, yeah. I don't look at this stuff every day.
Yeah, definitely. So, yes, on page two to three.
Okay. I can read it, then, that's fine. So these are the conditions, 1A, B, C, and D, right? So you just read what...
I read B.
C, 1B.
You read D, okay. So 1A, residential structures shall have three or more of the following architectural features. How many of those are they meeting?
That was the same as what was in 6.3 as well.
Okay, so then 1B shall have three of the following decorative features. You mentioned a lot of decorative stuff, so I think they exceeded that, right? Is that correct, or...
They have almost everything that was provided in 6.3, correct.
6.3, what are you referring to on that?
In the, what was originally in the UDO of what was in the small-town character.
The main change on that was the 75% of the facade would have a porch, and the condition is 50%.
And the architectural features, A1.
Any other questions or comments, or is there a motion?
My question was, is there a feature that we want, is there a feature that we wanted to ask for?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Is there, is there a feature, or...
Yeah, that was my question, yeah. From what I, and I made the statement about what we're able to do and not. So I was asking, was there a, was there an item that the group would agree, could agree upon, that they wanted to ask? That's my question.
Oh, do you have any suggestions, or, I mean, is that an open question?
That's an open, that's an open question, yeah.
Not hearing any.
Well, I guess, let me, I guess, ask my question again, just for confirmation. But I think the biggest thing that we have to think about when we're developing these lots in existing areas is compatibility and meshability, if you will, with the neighbors and what's going on. And staff feels that this is the case with this applicant, obviously based on your support of this, right? And not any other recommendations?
Correct.
I guess the main thing that stands out to me is just the request related to, you know, assessing the ability to provide the porches, porch or porches. I mean, that's the main thing that I see that's standing out to me that was in this, in this visual also. So that would be my question.
Well, I need, if you don't mind, I need clarification. So condition 1A has wraparound porch and predominant porch as two of the items on that list of architectural features that are part of the 1A group. And while the, you know, I guess what was given to us was a drawing with some suggestions, right?
Yeah.
But if the applicant is including those as options, and certainly he could opt out of a porch.
Right.
We, it would maybe not, I would have a hard time, I think we would have a hard time even legally requiring a porch.
I'm not requiring.
Right, so...
I can't mean to require.
Right, 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 I understand. And so if you're, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but are you asking, do you want to ask the applicant if he will include a porch as a requirement on this, in his application?
If he would voluntarily, which is what state law says, if he would voluntarily consent to that, and not opt out of it. That's just a question.
To the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone else want to ask the applicant that? Well, I'll ask, the question to you is, do you want to voluntarily consent to include a porch as one of the conditions on your application? Can you, well, I'm sorry, if you, I need you to come up so everybody can hear you. And you'll probably just go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Deborah Cox. And what else did you say?
Your address.
Oh, okay.
Residence.
Current, or...
Current residence.
Okay, 721 Hillsburg Lane, Apex. We don't have a design yet. I mean, we're working on it. And so we have a floor plan, and we're working on our elevation. But just as far as the porch is concerned, our next-door neighbor Cindy has what I think I would call a stoop over her front porch, just a, and I think Duane also has the same. So they just have a cover over the front porch, and not a full front porch. So at this point, because we're just working on our elevation, I don't want to have to commit to 50% porch, wraparound, full porch. We'll have some sort of porch, and it might be one of those. But because we're just not there yet, I don't want to have to commit to that, if that's okay.
Okay.
It's just a question of voluntary, so it is just, I didn't say what type of porch or all, but just saying I voluntarily try to do some porch feature. That's the question.
Absolutely. I mean, we'll definitely have a cover over our front door.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Anything else?
Oh, no, thank you.
All right, okay. With that, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve with the conditions that have been submitted. Any discussion?
I think we're going to rely on the property owner of any sort. This fellow's an architect who designed something that's going to be pleasant and of value. So I look at the conditions that are listed there. If I wanted to pick any three, I could make the Taj Mahal-looking thing if I wanted to. So basically, we're relying on the individual property owner truly, even with all these conditions that are laid out, that they can pick three of.
Yeah.
You know, you could be a vegetarian if you could pick three different things out of a bunch of meats, and... Okay, that's all. No more?
All right, nothing? Thank you.
And my thinking was, it was Oakwood where that modern house was. And I read the email, and I, but when I saw that story, I thought the modern house looked really neat. I know the neighbors thought, and I hope that it's not the case there were some crazy modern thing versus all these kind of historic-looking ones. I hope that's not the case. I don't think it will be. But, you know, my neighborhood's all very similar, and I think this area maybe is not like that. Maybe that's, I think the small-town overlay provides some protection to make it so it's not a crazy thing or an awful thing. But it's a little more different here. I think that maybe there's a value in that. And so maybe I, I don't live there, so maybe that's just my opinion, as in the, kind of in the suburbs of Apex versus the downtown. But that's why I think we're protected with these conditions, as volunteered.
All right.
I would say thank you for taking into consideration your neighbors as you build a house on this property.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you all for coming tonight. Hudson Street is one of the very few internal streets that is still not yet paved. In case y'all aren't familiar with Hudson Street, it is one of the very few, if not the only one left, near enough.
It works.
Soon will be paved? Yes, okay. Very good. All right, thank you all for coming. We now move to public hearing number five. And public hearing number five is for proposed amendments to the transportation plan in the Collector Street Plan map. And Shannon Cox is presenting.
Okay, good evening. We have five proposed amendments to the transportation plan this evening. So I'll walk through each of these slowly. They're mostly related to the Horton Park Plan Unit Development. You will be seeing the Horton Park Master Subdivision Plan for Pods 5 through 8 under the new business items. And I'm going to refer to that layout, just so that these make sense as we're walking through them. So the first, the first proposed amendment is to adjust the future alignment of Production Drive. And I will zoom in. This is existing Production Drive. Our transportation plan shows it extending south to Jesse Drive here. See that a little bit better? The amendment would shift that alignment slightly to the east, where it would intersect Jesse Drive. South of Jesse Drive, the alignment would shift from here to the west. And that is to create a four-legged intersection with Jesse Drive, potentially warranting a traffic signal in the future, which would likely aid mobility to properties both north and south of that Collector Street.
Can I ask you a quick question on this?
Sure.
In realigning, I guess it's Production Drive, you've moved it over all the way along that border. And I can understand why you want to realign it, because you want to line it up to the road coming out of Horton Park. But we're just giving up some property, I guess, or that individual's property by not coming down the, down the property line and then over a little bit, coming down farther. I was just curious.
So you mean somewhere?
Yeah, if it's...
In the middle here?
More in the middle, to just save a little more useful property for that fellow.
Yeah, so at this, at this level, what we're really trying to convey is connection points. And that the critical point is where Production Drive ends. And then at this corner here, when this property develops, if they want to look at a slightly different alignment that would work with environmental features and whatnot, we can do that at that time. So just continuing down Production Drive, the shift here is within the Horton Park PUD. It's supposed to support their proposed layout, as well as reduce some impacts to environmental features in that area. South of this east-to-west major Collector Street, Production Drive would shift from this property line to the west. And at this point, I want to show the purpose for that. This is the proposed layout that you will consider later this evening. This is the section of Production Drive that we were just looking at. This alignment allows them to have lots on both sides of the road. They have provided three stub streets to provide access to adjacent parcels. At the planning board's meeting, we did hear concerns from this property owner. This is the one adjacent property that does not have a stub street directly to their property. So you'll see this as a condition of the Horton Park Master Subdivision Plan. They have agreed to reserve this lot to be used for potential public right-of-way should this property redevelop with a plan showing a connection to Production Drive in advance of one of these stub streets being extended. I don't believe that this property owner is here tonight, but he did indicate that that satisfies his concern at the planning board meeting. And it does offer him some protection. If they did build a substrate here, he would have to extend that onto his property, in addition to the alignment of this future connection. Okay. So that was for Production Drive. The planning board, oops, sorry. The planning board added an additional recommendation addressing the same concern of that property owner to actually show on the transportation plan a future local connector street extending from the substrate that would be provided as part of Horton Park, both north and south across these properties. Typically, we use these on a transportation plan where a critical connection would be made. They're typically a residential, residential street. Planning staff do support that recommendation as well. The third amendment to the transportation plan is to slightly adjust the alignment of this east-to-west major Collector Street that extends from Smith Road ultimately to 55. There is a slight shift here in the alignment, as well as east of the intersection with future Production Drive. The shift here is to support the proposed layout. The shift here reflects the condition included in the PUD text. The residents along existing Desola Street desired for that major collector to be further from their property and to not have it directly where they have access to their property. And so this alignment accomplishes that goal.
Major collector, they can't have driveways or anything on it. And I assume that that works well with Horton Park.
That's right. And so what you're looking at is the major collector, and now this is the substrate where they would have access to their property. Okay, the fourth proposed amendment is to shift the alignment of Percussion Drive, which on our current plan is right here. which on our current plan is right here. And then this is existing Percussion Drive on the east side of Smith Road. This would be shifted slightly south to enable lots to be built on both sides of that street as part of Horton Park. And then the final amendment is to remove this minor Collector Street from the plan with this shift south and this shift north, as well as these two residential street connections. Planning staff agreed with the recommendation to remove that minor Collector Street. So the four original amendments to the plan, the Production Drive alignment, the shift in the east-west major collector, the Percussion Drive alignment, and removing the minor collector were reviewed by Public Works and Transportation, Fire, Police, and Planning. And none of these departments had any concerns. Planning staff also support the recommendation for the local connector street as proposed by the planning board. Planning board unanimously recommended approval of all of these changes. And I can try to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone?
So Production Drive on the north side up there, to Mr. Jensen's point, you shifted it to the east a little bit. That's kind of slicing off that left side of that individual's property. But you said he could always come back and realign it. But how would you realign that to have an intersection? An X?
So...
Because we just took a big piece of the edge of his property away from him by putting a road there, right?
I don't think I'm mistaking that this property owner is the same property owner. It's not, okay. This would allow lots to be built on either side. It is a minor collector or some use of that property.
That's an industrial piece of property, though, isn't it?
Yes, it is. That's true. So we'd have to meet the radius. You'd have to have a 90-degree intersection. But beyond that, there is some flexibility for that to be adjusted. We would just do that at the time of site plan, not the transportation planning level.
Maybe I'm wrong, but I just don't see there being much other options for that person in the future. But you have to have a 90-degree intersection there. But maybe I don't know everything about road design, but...
Well, you just have to have the right curvatures, and you can come down that property line probably a little farther and then come off of it.
Yeah.
Meet the curvatures. And that was just a question. And I understand what staff is saying that, you know, this is just a cartoon of approximation.
It's the connectors.
Showing the connectivities. And so I think that we're ahead. I was ahead of the game when I was looking to press it up there and design the road, which I am not a road designer, obviously. So I'm satisfied.
On the south end of this, I noticed where it intersects Colby Chase. Did we move the intersection closer to the... There's a bridge down there, I believe, right? Or there will be, or there...
Need to stop looking. So there is a culvert there on Colby Chase. Is that what you're referring to?
Isn't there a bridge down there on Colby Chase from the other side? Not from the Marion side, but from the other side. Isn't there a bridge?
I think it's the culvert that you're referring to. I mean, you might consider it a bridge, but...
Yeah. So we moved it closer to that? Is that what that's showing?
So it hasn't... Let me zoom in here. So I'm not exactly sure where the culvert is on Colby Chase. But we're... The D? Right here. So...
So it's just a creek culvert?
Yeah, it's Middle Creek going through that area.
But you said culvert, not bridge, right?
But it's a large culvert.
Right.
Okay. Any others?
Where's the bridge at down there? I swear there's a bridge down there somewhere.
You describe it as a bridge.
Might look like it from the top.
There's a bridge somewhere down there.
It's an open-bottom culvert, but it is classified as a bridge per state standards.
It has a road on top of it?
It does.
Okay, with guardrails on the side, okay. I'm thinking culvert. I swear it's got a road on top of it.
Yeah. Yeah, most people who see it from the side, you'd probably consider it a bridge if you look. But it's a very large culvert, yeah. Yeah, so I consider it a million-dollar culvert.
When is the hill?
All right, thanks, Ron. Do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Any other questions for Shannon on any of these items? All right, thank you. And this is presented by staff, so I will now open the public hearing. And seeing that no one signed up to speak at the public hearing, I will close the public hearing and refer the matter back to council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, got a motion and a second discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Great, thank you. All right, we now move to public hearing number six. This is regarding various amendments to the UDO. And Amanda Bunce is presenting. Ms. Bunce?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so there are seven amendments before you tonight, and I'll pause after each one to see if you have questions. The first amendment is to propose to amend the design standards that apply to convenience stores with or without gas cells and to the canopies. And the standards to be deleted basically require convenience stores and the canopies to have a pitched roof or require the buildings to have a residential appearance, which is a bit of an outdated design standard and actually can cause convenience stores to not match the more modern commercial architecture that we see these days. So that is the reason we are proposing to strike these standards. The other standard that's proposed to be struck is basically forcing the... Trying to place the gas canopy to not be the predominant feature on the parcel and be to the side or to the rear of the building. But what's happening is that the back of convenience stores is being put toward an intersection. And that's the trend we're starting to see. And that's not desired either. And so staff's proposal is to strike the standards regulating the placement of the gas pump canopy and instead improve the architectural standards for these types of buildings instead for the actual building portion. And so we have proposed a minimum amount of glazing on the front facade and any sides that face a parking area or public street. And glazing is windows and doors, anything that's transparent. And we've also proposed a minimum percentage of brick and/or stacked stone on the front facade or any side that faces a parking area or a public street. And so... And these numbers were derived at looking at our last five either submitted or recently approved convenience stores and analyzing the percent of glazing and/or brick or stacked stone and setting the standards that were consistent with those buildings that we thought were of a good design. And it was fairly consistent with those gas stations that were analyzed. And then we are proposing, as part of this, to strike a content-related sign standard. Do you have to answer any questions you may have on that?
With this one, this is more a UDO question than this particular. But if the gas station is sold and bought by another gas station, do they have to go do this... Do they have to retrofit, or is this all like new construction?
This would be new construction. And this would be if there were going to be major renovations or reconfiguration of a structure, then they may have to comply. So they would fall under the non-conforming standards of the UDO.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, just because it's changing brand or changing ownership, they would not have to make these changes.
Major reconstruction.
Yeah, like just major renovation.
Is that defined somewhere?
Yeah, yeah, it is. So if they're just, you know, changing out the windows or changing out the doors that are existing, they would not have to comply with all of these standards. But if they were going to like tear down a wall and change the shape of the building, then we would look at what has to apply then.
What is glazing?
It's windows or doors, anything that's transparent. Okay. The next amendment is to clarify, for the most part, some of that's an existing standard. And that is the parking and building setbacks that are required from... Require buffers and RCA. So for the most part, we already require that buildings be set back 10 feet from buffers and RCA and parking areas be set back five feet. And that's to allow sufficient protection for the trees and room for trees to grow without causing issues. And so the standards are a bit disjointed and not clear. And so we're clearing those standards up and applying the standard as well to riparian buffers, which are often designated as RCA, but not always. So it's really not much of a change, but more of clarification. Any questions there? Okay. The next amendment is to the parking lot design standard section. And we're simply adding a reference to the standards for measuring the dimensions of a parking space that are found in the Town of Apex Standards, Specifications, and Details Manual. And that's just... We're just adding a reference to that. And I've included an image here that says how that's measured. Any questions to that? It's a fairly easy one. Okay, for the next amendment, I'm going to let Sarah Rayfield present this. This is relating to community amenities and public art on private property. This is a new standard in the UDO.
All right. The next UDO amendment is for community amenities and pedestrian flow. So I will read the applicability and then we'll read all of the new text for you. So the new text and the applicability, we're going to strike the word "this" here. So the provisions of Section 8.4 shall apply to all non-residential development and residential development in the PUD, conditional zoning, SD, conditional zoning, and TND, conditional zoning, planned development districts. The provisions shall also apply to all residential and non-residential development subject to Section 8.4.5, Public Art on Private Property, which leads us to the new section, 8.4.5, Public Art on Private Property. Public art includes, but is not limited to... I'm sorry, before I get into this, I'll just go ahead and give you all the quick context. As you all know, back in August, the Public Art Plan was amended and then the Public Art Map was adopted. So essentially, this is just the text to give us some guidance when projects that are applicable come through for review.
Did it originate with the Parks and Rec Council Committee? Or did you guys kind of advise them?
It did originate from the Public Art Plan. So a lot of this language is actually from that plan.
Okay.
Thank you for that. So, "Public art includes, but is not limited to statues, sculptures, murals, fountains, design elements, and functional art located on private property." A, applicability. The following standards shall only apply to properties abutting intersections identified as target areas on the Public Art Plan map, which are required to provide public art on private property. B, location. Public art can be located anywhere on private property so long as it is visible by the public and does not require the public to be a patron or resident of the development in which the art is located in order to view the art. C, the planning director shall provide public art on private property... Or shall approve, sorry, public art on private property which meets the following standards. One, artwork shall reflect the character and tradition of the location. Two, artwork shall be designed and constructed with materials and in a manner suitable for the physical environment, including its maintenance and conservation requirements. Three, artwork shall be the appropriate size and scale for the site and shall take advantage of site orientation, lighting, landscape, and surrounding features. Four, artwork shall be designed with the relationship of the work to the site in mind, giving special consideration to how it serves to enhance the space. Five, artwork shall be of high-quality design and workmanship. Six, artwork shall be the work of a professional artist and shall not be mass-produced. D, such art shall not conflict with Section 8.7 signs. Public art shall not be created, displayed, or placed in a way so as to advertise or contain a commercial message or logo. E, such art shall count as a community amenity per Section 8.4.3, Community Amenities. And the one area of the UDO that would need to be modified for this is Section 8.2.6b, general buffering requirements. So there are some changes here, and this is the major change. And that would be that public art on private property with any platted public art on private property easement would now be permitted. The reason for this is that often the buffer being along the perimeter may be the ideal location for the public art to be housed. And so this essentially would allow for that to be in that location. And I will be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Carrying on, number five. The next amendment is to remove a couple of outdated graphics that are in the UDO and the caption that goes along with them. The UDO previously prohibited signs that had multiple tenants displayed. And it's a content-related standard. That's no longer the case. And so we just did not remove the graphics. So the proposal is just to remove these graphics and the caption. The next amendment is also to the sign section. And it is to allow permanent window signs to be installed either on the inside or the outside of a window or door. Currently, it's only allowed to be placed on the inside. And then we are proposing to add a standard that temporary window signs shall only be installed on the inside of a window or door. Any questions for that? Okay. Okay, and this amendment, number seven, was requested by the planning committee and affects the use table and supplemental standard sections in order to add or remove certain permitted uses in the B2 Downtown Business Owning District, amend where certain uses are permitted in that district, and to add and modify supplemental standards for certain uses. And so prior to the use table, we have a footnote... A series of footnotes with one, two, and now three asterisks. And so the new standard is, uses in the Central Business District designated as permitted with three asterisks are not allowed in storefront locations. Storefront locations shall mean the first four of all spaces abutting North Salem Street, East Chatham Street, West Chatham Street, Saunders Street, and Templeton Street, as well as along all public parking lots and garages. And so in your SAC report, you had the whole use table, but I've consolidated to only the uses that are proposed to change here. So there are six uses that are proposed to be removed from the B2 zoning district. And that would be daycare facility, drop-in or short-term daycare, youth or day camps, dry cleaners and laundry service, funeral home, and pharmacy. There are 11 uses, as you can see here, that are primarily office and personal service, bank uses that would be restricted from storefront locations within the Central Business District. And then two uses are proposed to be added to the B2 district, and that is microbrewery and micro-distillery. The changes to the supplemental standards for church or place of worship, we're simply striking the word "west" before Chatham Street as there are portions of East and West Chatham Street in the Central Business District. We are adding a supplemental standard for government service. So if there's a government service used proposed in the B2 district, that it must be freestanding and basically not in a storefront location. The supplemental standard for bed and breakfast, that if there's one in the B2 Downtown Business District, it shall be freestanding. And then similar to the church or place of worship for a theater, we're simply striking the word "west" from the supplemental standard. And this is a map showing the Central Business District area, the black border. And this magenta-dark pink area is the Downtown Business District, the B2 District within the Central Business District, to give you some context. And I'll be happy to answer any ques... Most important thing. Planning staff recommends approval of these amendments. The planning board heard these amendments at their meeting last week and unanimously recommended approval. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions before we go to public hearing? All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Bunce. And this time, I'll open the public hearing. Call Ms. Julia Beam, followed by Marshall Barnes. Call Ms. Julia Beam, followed by Marshall Barnes.
Hello, Mayor and Town Council members. I'm Julia Beam. I'm the president of Apex Downtown Business Association. I'm also a downtown property and business owner. I've owned a preschool located at 115 Commerce Street since 2011. First, thank you for funding the downtown plan. I know I and ADBA members are excited about the opportunity to participate in this process, working towards improving our downtown Central District. We believe this plan will enhance the downtown experience for Apex residents, visitors, business owners, and downtown building owners. In an effort to organize our thoughts and be prepared to contribute to this plan, we formed a committee of the ADBA to determine what we saw as needs and desires for downtown improvements. During this process, several disturbing trends started to emerge. After conducting research, we met with town staff and the planning committee to convey these recent concerning trends. Some of what we found include, five of our street-front retail spaces occupied by retail businesses in 2015 are now owned and occupied by non-retail tenants. Multiple landlords have expressed a desire to replace street-front retail tenants with offices and other non-retail uses. Two buildings in the downtown Central District were sold last month, and it has been reported that the new owners wish to use the buildings for more office space. Foot traffic in downtown is down. This negatively affects sales and indicates that our draw to downtown is fading. The proper ratios of retail, restaurant, non-retail, and office uses are critical in creating and maintaining a vibrant downtown district. Apex currently has no established ratios. Other North Carolina downtowns have effectively dried up after their ratios have swung too far in one direction. Once established, it could take years, if ever, to undo office or other non-retail uses if our ratios swing too far. So the ADBA supports the proposed UDO changes affecting permitted uses in the Central Business District. We envision these changes as measures to permit, to prevent the immediate future decline of our downtown. We further envision the consultant hired for the downtown plan will recommend the proven ratios and the proper mix of retail, restaurant, non-retail, and office uses for your consideration. Please know that ADBA is committed to working with the town, downtown business owners, property owners, and all others concerned, in making our downtown the absolute best it can be for all concerned. While we realize some downtown property owners may oppose these changes, we would ask that they look at these measures and encourage them to participate in the downtown planning process so that their concerns could be addressed. We believe if we all work together and create communication with affected parties, that we will make downtown better than it ever has been. Thank you for your favorable consideration of these changes.
Thank you.
Eight minutes to spare. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Eight seconds.
There you go. I wasn't going to correct that.
Sounds like wolves.
That was well done. Mr. Barnes?
Mayor, council members, Marshall Barnes. I live at 103 South Salem Street. Just wanted to say, I'm a downtown building owner, have property in the Central Business District. We have several storefront retail businesses in the district currently, and I support these changes. Appreciate your favorable action.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you, Mr. Barnes. With that, I'll close the public hearing. A further matter, back to council for a possible motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion, a second discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you all. Now, that concludes our public hearings tonight. We now move into time of old business. Old business number one was a continuation of the August 21st meeting.
Good evening.
Okay, can you pause one second?
Sure.
We have some folks leaving, but let's take a, I apologize for this, but let's take a three-minute recess, and we'll come right back. Three minutes, just a brief one.
They're falling at the time, right?
I was trying to get one more, you didn't go for it.
Yeah, I didn't know that he could.
Did he pass the word there?
Yes, I figured he really had to go. And I'm looking for something that I was supposed to done, and I'm like, ugh. Oh.
No, Medicaid, Medicare does not call a personal care service. Medicaid.
I did see him. But she's got, she's doing that for life.
And they're coming in both leaves.
We're maybe, we gotta check with them, the long-term, even though it's a long-term schedule, I just go to them, and they're like, I need some help with this, he's too aggressive.
Well, no, it's good to do, I'm glad people came to the house.
You doing all right?
Yes, yes, okay.
No, that would be the opposite effect.
You didn't bring your gun when you went out there to shoot those guys doing the hunting?
I could see, man, you were on a mission.
You are.
Every, every, or every time, every time, every time I tell, please tell them.
Yeah, I'm sure he does.
The first couple of meetings, actually, last meeting, I said, "Tell them, do not clean this building on the first, 13th, 14th."
Yeah, yeah. And they're there. And they're actually, they're the entire.
Too many issues.
I enjoyed watching you walk the dog.
Were you?
Oh, that's what a wall is for.
It's not, it's not, it's not their fault.
No, there's five.
You clean the building?
Okay.
They go for it. Lost me, so, don't clean that building. Go over here and do this.
Yeah.
Talk to the problem.
Feel sorry for those guys that throw them off.
Those are nice guys that are doing this.
Having a little problem with communication.
Everything's good.
No noise in the film.
Sounding like a dish when you're not in the room.
Well, it's like a child flipping a TV.
Oh, you know that.
About two hours ago, every night.
Right for your restart?
I don't have a good band.
All right.
Good for you.
For everybody else.
I think you're patient, so it's not worth it.
I will go.
Thank you.
I enjoy it.
Thank you, Amber.
All right, thanks for coming out tonight.
Drive safely.
Hmm?
Drive safely.
Your power's about to be used.
Watch out for that speed trap on the center.
I got a break from everybody else talking.
He's in the corner.
He's in the corner.
He's always over there.
Mike Wilson just sat there.
Only the new ones, I know, doesn't matter.
They're present.
Yeah, 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 indeed.
Getting caught on the radar.
Thank you, thank you, yeah.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, J.C.
The rescue vehicle has been dented, I got to meet them.
That's what I thought.
Okay, because I like, I think I left it home.
I told Drew I didn't trust him anymore.
How long did it take us to figure out?
Drew gets zero.
Figure out zero?
Don't forget to unmute.
I did, thank you.
We're back in session. Thanks for the break, and we'll now go to old business number one, the Land Use Map Amendments. Shelley Mayo.
Good evening. I'm going to do a brief overview, just as a reminder of what we covered last month on this particular project, and then I'm going to move into the changes and kind of some of the discussions that staff held in between. The project before you is located at 3050 Lufkin Road. It's down here on the southwest-eastern side of our property, or of our jurisdiction, I mean. It's located to the east of Summit Church, and to the west of the Sheets, and then just to the south of the US-1 and 1010 Road interchange. The property is about 3.33 acres, and the applicant's requesting that there be a Land Use Map Amendment to change it from planned commercial to industrial employment. This is because they're also requesting a rezoning from planned commercial conditional zoning to tech flex conditional zoning. If you look at page two of your staff report, the list of uses and conditions are shown there. Several uses were taken out of this as a result of conversations with staff, and then also as a result of planning board recommendation. So we have a total of 38, just to give a sampling of them. We have a convenience store with gas sales, kennel, medical or dental, office or clinic, real estate sales, and woodworking or cabinet making. The first four, I'm sorry, the first three conditions that are shown there are consistent with our stand, with kind of standard architectural conditions that we've seen before. The fourth one is that service base shall be located at the rear of the structure. The building facade facing Lufkin Road and 1010 will shot consist of at least 50% glass. Number six, the building shall use materials, colors, and architectural elements similar to the building at 4,000 Lufkin, that's the Sheets. Across access easement shall also be provided to that property. Numbers eight and number nine are brand-new conditions, so I'm going to read those out for you. Number eight, the use contractor's office and storage yard shall only permitted, I'm sorry, shall only be permitted to have outside storage if the storage area elevation, measured at any point, is no more than four feet lower than the elevation of the southern right-of-way of Lufkin Road at the site driveway, and all screening requirements of the UDO are met. If the elevation of any point of the proposed storage area for such use is more than four feet lower than the elevation of the southern right-of-way of Lufkin Road at the site driveway, then such use shall only be permitted to have outside parking for contractor's vehicles located in the rear of the building, provided the contractor's vehicles are standard-sized, road-ready, and licensed vehicles which fit easily into standard parking spaces. No trailers, oversized vehicles, or construction equipment may be parked outdoors on site. All screening requirements of the UDO shall be met. So basically, that particular condition is addressing that bold concern that we had last time, where the site is very low at the rear. When I, when we looked at the pre-application submittal that the applicant had provided to staff, they did show that they were planning on filling most of the rear, which would bring that up and would address that bold-type consideration that we had. And while that's just a pre-application meeting and is not something that's binding at any point right now, we decided to work with the applicant to make that condition a little bit more flexible, so that if they fill that up enough so that you can't see down into the storage yard, regardless of how much screening they put around it, then we're fine with having the screening there. Our concern is primarily that if it's not filled up to that level, then no matter what happens and no matter how many plants or how tall the fence is, you're still going to be able to see into it. So this condition gives that flexibility. If it's filled sufficiently, they can have their outdoor storage at the contractor's office, as long as the screening requirements are met. If it's not filled sufficiently, if it's still very low, then they can't have that there, and they'll just have to park vehicles and things of that nature in the back. The next condition that was added is number nine. The building shall be preconfigured with conduit for a solar energy system, and the roof shall be designed and built to support the weight of solar panels. As I mentioned, the last meeting, planning board heard this in their August 13th meeting, and with a vote of six to one, recommended approval with the removal of four land uses. Those land uses were removed by the applicant. At the last meeting, town council continued this project to September 8th to this meeting, and directed staff to work with the applicant on a site design condition that would prohibit larger trucks from accessing the site via the shared driveway with Sheets. We worked with, planning staff worked with the town's transportation engineer to try to figure out some way of designing the site to meet those criteria, and he actually had a couple of concerns. The first one was that we actually have a problem with large trucks just going ahead and using the site, even if they can't make their turning radius work. And what happens is they end up going up on the curbs and crushing them, and going through the, you know, the edges of tree islands and things, and leaving ruts and stuff like that. So the concern was that if we did design the site to prohibit those trucks, that they would still try to use it, maybe not multiple times for each driver, but some of them would still try to use it, and it would end up being unsightly and a maintenance issue. The second concern is actually the greater of the two, and that's that designing anything for, to prohibit large trucks will also make it incredibly difficult for the fire department to get into the site with their emergency vehicles. We double-checked this with the fire chief, and he was also concerned because road width and design are really important for fire trucks. According to the fire chief, it takes about 18 to 19 feet of open space to fully deploy the stabilizers on the ladder truck, and that's needed so they can actually use the ladder and brace against the water impact coming out of the, out of the fire hydrant. The fire chief was not supportive of designing something to restrict larger vehicles, because a fire truck, especially the ladder truck, is typically one of the least maneuverable vehicles on the road because of their length, and because they don't have that pivot point that a tractor-trailer does. Tractor-trailer can get around a little bit easier because of the way the neck is built. So because of that, we're not coming to you with a site design consideration. Instead, we worked with the applicant and talked to them more about what they, what types of uses they were actually wanting to bring to the site, and realized that the two land uses that we had talked about last time that were going to generate most of that truck traffic weren't actually uses that were going to get them the kinds of tenants that they were wanting anyway. So the applicant has agreed to remove building supplies wholesale and warehousing from the list. And with the removal of those two, that takes away all of staff's concern regarding large truck traffic, because those two are the ones that would generate the most large truck traffic. Instead, now, any big truck traffic that comes through there will be occasional and very low in volume. So having those two removed from the use list addresses that safety concern for staff. The applicant also agreed to those conditions eight and nine, which I just read a moment ago, and we worked those out to try to get as much flexibility as we could. That said, staff does not recommend the Land Use Map Amendment, since we don't believe that this proposed Land Use Map Amendment is in keeping with the existing and planned properties for this portion of Lufkin Road and 1010. Advance Apex also doesn't show any changes to the Land Use Map in this area, and this intersection serves as the commercial node between US-1 and the residential properties to the north and east, and the intensifying industrial uses to the east and south. These kinds of And this intersection serves as a commercial node between US-1 and the residential properties to the north and east, and the intensifying industrial uses to the east and south. These kinds of nodes are common at major intersections and are really vital for providing those easily accessible commercial services to passersby's and neighborhoods. However, if the 2030 land use map amendment is approved, planning can recommend the approval of the zoning with the final conditions agreed to by the applicant. We have no concerns about that. If you have any questions, I am happy to answer them. If you have any for the applicant, he's here as well.
Any questions for Ms. Mayo? So just to be perfectly clear, planning staff does not recommend approval of this proposal.
Kind of.
Is not recommending...
We don't recommend that the land use map.
Of modifying the land use map according to the set.
If...
Right.
If the vote is to go ahead and amend the land use map, then we have no concerns with the existing rezoning request.
Okay. Okay. Questions?
Yeah, so that still means that, that the concerns from public safety from the fire chief still stand along with you related to this amendment as well, to this plan as well?
It's more along the lines of the fire chief's concerns prevented us from getting you the condition that you originally directed us to come back with. And in order to make sure that we're not stepping on safety concerns, we instead kind of went around the back and just got rid of the uses that were causing the concerns.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the conversation, I think, if I can frame this, should, among the council, is are we generally okay with making a modification to the land use map? And if so, let's talk about the conditions. If not, then we don't need to spend time talking about those conditions if we're, if we're leaning towards not accepting a land use map amendment change. Not trying to guide you in any direction, I just want to make sure I frame that well. So let's discuss, are we of a mind to modify the land use map?
So I can go ahead and start. I think that makes a lot of sense. For me, I haven't changed from where I stood originally, based on the recommendation of our planning staff and then the public safety angle. And then just not rising up for, you know, change from advanced Apex, which is some of the things that we talked about earlier. I'm not in support of changing the land use map.
So can I get clarification on the current map and what it says should go there and what we're changing to? Or are being asked to change to?
So commercial services typically allows the planned commercial district, B1, B2, and essentially our more retail and commercially oriented districts.
More retail oriented?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is what it currently is, okay?
Yeah. Well, no, that is what it currently is. The tech flex is more of a crossover between the, kind of the more retail and office-type districts into more of a, it starts to allow more of the industrial-type uses, but not typically the heavy industrial uses, if that makes sense. It's kind of a blending of kind of the edges, to get the most compatible uses and something that can be considered to kind of go along the edges and make that transition. That's the word I'm looking for, the transitional district. So they do have some things in here that are more, more kind of industrial than otherwise. Some of the things that would not be allowed in here is just retail general, for example, and that's something that they have as an option now, which would just be basically any kind of retail you can normally think of. They still have the ability, they would, they would have the ability to do office, business, or professional in either district. There would be some more retail options available in their existing district.
So...
But they've had difficulty marketing towards that particular, those types of uses, so they were looking to go more into those transitions.
So there is a little bit of crossover between the two zonings?
There is. You can think of tech flex as going right kind of between the commercial services stuff and the light industrial stuff.
So this, this area, correct me if I say something wrong.
Please.
Staff typically looks at this area as being close enough to the intersection that it's more retail-heavy, and we haven't really gotten far enough away from that corner in order to start transitioning to straight-up commercial, just straight-up commercial or indu, light industrial. And so tech, for me, having been on planning board, if I can jump in on my own opinion, this is a little, for me, this is a little too close for tech flex. I think if you moved further away from this area, then you can start talking about tech flex. I understand where staff are coming from when they say they don't recommend the change, simply just because tech flex really does need to be back a bit further from retail to transition. So this would be one where we would look at this and go, do we want to start transitioning this close to the intersection? And also keep in mind, 10-10 Road is about to come 50 or 100 feet closer.
Pretty significant shed.
In a few years, when that gets widened, they're going to build two new bridges to the southwest. So the current bridge is actually not going to be the use anymore. So that whole path changes. Y'all probably seen that map. Yeah, that one. So you can see that 10-10 and the widening of it is going to move closer to the proper, the subject property here.
This being the subject property, it's a slightly different angle than our other maps are.
And see, this is, I mean, this is about as close as you get to, you know, retail appropriate. And I think part of the concern is if you, if you want to make a change to the land use map and opens the doors for other things, you run the risk of losing a potential retail use where somebody's literally looking for a retail use and they're just not finding it. And that's where this parcel may be, may be a great place for retail. Tech flex, we tend to just push further away from this kind of intersection.
Just to give an example, staff would normally be more comfortable with, say, these parcels over here being tech flex, or a couple of these down here, because it is kind of that transitional zone from the light industrial over. That's part of the reason why this was zoned tech flex. That's the Pinnacle Park Center. That was the non-residential subdivision that was done a year or two ago, maybe two years ago now. So if, if, say, these parcels wanted to go tech flex, then staff would probably be more comfortable supporting that. But were these particular parcels right here right at the intersection and kind of complement these that are also right at the intersection? This is the new meridian at 10-10 that's under construction. So that's going to be a lot of brand-new residents right there. We'd prefer to keep it that way. However, if y'all decide that you would like, that the, changing the land use map is where you'd like to go, we have no concerns about this particular application.
I think that's a very important point. That's high-density residential there. And not only that, but with the construction of the new wider bridge, it'll also include pedestrian crossing, where the current one absolutely, positively does not. And I do not recommend trying to cross that on foot.
You can say that you're very brave and very lucky.
Well, thank you for saying so, but I won't do it again. But, but when the new bridges are constructed there, it will open that up to all of Waterford Green, all of Seagro's Farm, all of Groves to walk to that area for retail.
So question, of the 40, there's 40 allowable uses in the tech flex proposal?
Mm-hmm.
You, I don't know if y'all have already done this or not, but how many, I mean, what's the crossover between, how many crossover between the tech flex and commercial services?
One second. I actually have a chart that I'm looking at comparing to right now. Do I have any of those? So of course, the Parks and Greenway ones would be allowed in either one. The applicant would be losing restaurant with drive-through for this particular application. They would be gaining, one sec. This isn't in alphabetical order, it's in use order. They would be able to keep medical or dental office or clinic. They would be gaining medical or dental laboratory. Office, business, or professional stays the same, it's allowed in either use. Publishing office is one that they would be gaining here. And this isn't like a Kinko's. Publishing office is more like a printing facility, if you print books or periodicals or things like that. It's not something that you think of when you have to go run to Kinko's and make 30 copies of a presentation for work. So just to give you an idea of what the difference is there. The research facility is a use that they would be gaining. They'd also be gaining artisan studio, but would be losing barber, barber and beauty shop, bookstore, and building supplies retail. Convenience store and convenience store with gas sales remains the same regardless. They'd be losing dry cleaners and laundry service, as well as financial institution, floral shop, gas and fuel retail, which is like a quarrel, like a, it's more like a fleet services kind of thing. It's one that doesn't have a building associated with it at all. Basically, you go in with a card and you pay. But they would be losing that use. They'd be picking up glass sales, losing greenhouse or nursery retail. They're picking up, or they would be picking up monument sales, retail, and losing new standard gift shop, losing pharmacy, picking up Repair Services Limited, which is pretty much all, all normal auto repair, except for like oil changes, anything that's not super minor. So Repair Services Limited does most major mechanical repair on a car. Retail sales, general changes from, oh, I'm sorry, retail sales, bulky goods stays the same. They're picking up, never mind. They're losing theater, but this is too small of a spot anyway. They're picking up upholstery services, losing pawn shop, picking up automotive, whoops, I looked at the wrong list for a second. They would be losing automotive parts service or automotive parts store and automotive service station. Car wash and repair maintenance general would stay the same. Vehicle inspection center would stay the same.
What about microbrewery, micro-distillery? Is that new or is that stay the same?
Uh, they would, those would be new uses.
Those would be new allowable uses?
I take that back. Microbrewery would stay the same, micro-distillery is one that they're picking up. And then they'd be picking up woodworking or cabinet making and wholesaling general. I just realized wholesaling general's not on this list, so ignore that part.
And, okay, thank you for doing that. And the applicant removed four of staff's concerned uses?
They were actually uses that planning board was concerned about. The applicant has worked with staff over the last three months, and a lot of uses were taken out of the original draft that was brought into planning board and town council. So they've already taken out a whole bunch of stuff that we just didn't think worked here, like self-service storage. I mean, it's not a big enough site, it won't fit it, you know, that kind of thing. Planning board had four, had some concerns because of the proximity of the rezoning to the school. They wanted to mitigate some of those traffic concerns. So they requested that daycare facility, drop-in or short-term daycare, both be removed because of traffic concerns. And they also requested that broadcasting station and radio and television get removed because of aesthetic concerns, mostly because of the giant antenna that go up with those, since this is right next to US-1. And the applicant had no problem with that. So those four got removed then. And then that left planning staff with two concerns at our last meeting, the building supplies wholesale, which is like an 84 lumber thing and something along those size, or along those lines with big chunks of wood everywhere, and then just warehousing. And after discussing with the applicant and kind of digging down to see what they were really hoping to accomplish here, we realized neither of those uses will actually get them what they were hoping for, so they were willing to take those out.
Okay.
So the correct list of uses is actually the one that's shown on page two of the updated staff report that was printed out. That shows the 38 that staff has agreed to, with the, has agreed with the applicant to. And my apologies, I should have pointed out that I printed out a copy for you.
I was going to ask you where's eight and nine.
I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing.
All right, now I got it.
Had it in my head, but it didn't make it out of my mouth.
Thank you for clarifying that. I mean, from, from my perspective, I feel the applicant has been, has worked with everybody in this, through this process the last couple of months, and is very accommodating and removed a lot of stuff and tried to make it as palatable as, as they can, the, the ground, the grading separation. I mean, I, I don't see, there's a lot of crossover with uses. There seems to be a sufficient amount of retail, still allowable retail uses that if anybody dares walk on the new road when it's constructed to, to get over there. I'm in support of this, I think this is a good idea. There seems to be a lot of uses that are still allowed there for the site. That would make sense.
I have a question for you, maybe, or Diane. Is there a history or precedent for churches turning, like, back into retail in Apex or Cary, or nearby that you know of?
Are you asking for churches that were retail, storefront churches went into the retail, and if they ever go back to retail?
Yeah, right. Like, this, this thing is the red and church property too. Is there ever, can we, can we expect the church to revert back to something else if they, you know, besides the church?
That particular church was built as a church, so I don't believe it'll ever go retail.
Actually, that church was built specifically so that it could go industrial if they had to move later on, but again, probably not going to happen.
That's not retail though. So the retail examples we have are like New Horizon, that was originally a food lion. Once it became a church, it has never changed.
Okay, yeah, I'm asking about the other direction, like, if this become a retail place, would, would that church ever be part of it? In theory, it could be, I guess, because it's zoned that way.
Actually, if we could look, is there an aerial? You can't get to the church from this property, there's a big creek and, and grade difference here. This property, you can see has a shared driveway with the Sheets. It naturally goes with the property toward 10-10. The back of the church faces this, it doesn't, it doesn't address this property. The church does not address the property at all. If they had needed a change to tech flex or office institutional, we would have recommended the church go ahead and go that way, because it's far enough away, it doesn't address 10-10 in any way.
My thought is that I agree with planning staff that this should stay commercial, planned commercial. It's close enough, we've got 10-10 that's going to be expanding in this area. I just don't think that this is the right place for tech flex, for a change. I think if it was down further south or maybe inward a little bit more, then yes, but not here.
They still have plenty of uses still in the current zoning.
Is there a motion?
I'm going to do a motion to deny.
Second.
Is there a discussion? We have a motion and a second for denial. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Well, this is not like a normal public hearing, right? There's not going to be the applicant again and...
This is not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
This is old business.
It's old business now, okay.
Mm-hmm. Yep, yep.
So can the applicant be asked questions for this one and if there is...
If you believe it's relevant in helping you make your mind up for how you're going to vote, then I think, to a limited degree, I think, I'll, I'll give you a little latitude for that, because I want you to be able to make your mind up. But I also want to be cautious in doing that, because I don't want to create a precedent of that. But if you have a clarification question for the applicant that helps you decide how you want to vote, if you just want to understand some more things, we can do that after the fact. fact.
I'm good.
Okay, all right. Not hearing any other discussion. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion, which is denial. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, which would be the opposite, please indicate by saying no.
No.
All right, so that passes by four to one. Um, I will, um, make a quick commentary. Um, I understand, and I do appreciate as well, the work that has been put into coming up with alternatives to try to make this palatable. But I think, um, there is reason why this area is planned the way it is and there are, there are good planning guidelines and best practices. And we love tech flex in the right place, but from my standpoint, this is, and this is the assessment, I believe, both of planning staff and also the, the decision of the council is this is too close to the retail area and really deserves to be something along the lines of retail. Um, we'd love to see whatever business you've got from a tech flex perspective finds you a different place and we can try to help you do that. Or if you're just trying to maximize the property, I'm not sure which angle you're coming from, um, you know, to the best of our abilities, we can try to help do that as well. All right. All right, thank you. Um, that concludes old business number one. We now move to old business number two, which is, um, the possible resolution authorizing sale of town land and initiating the upset bid process. And we throw this one to our town manager, Drew Havens.
I have to go to the podium, but this is the same, the same resolution that you saw previously. Uh, this lot has been declared surplus. It's now been rezoned. We have a current offer on the table to purchase the property. Um, adopting the resolution would then start the upset bid process.
All right. Um, so, questions on that? Questions for Drew?
The upset bid process is what exactly? Twenty days, thirty days?
It's like a baseball.
The resolution with, uh, that came with the agenda item, so you're gonna authorize the sale of the property. The finance director shall cause notice that the proposed sale will be published. Um, persons wishing to upset the offer have ten days. At the conclusion of the ten-day period, the town clerk will open any bids, um, that are proffered. Um, and this process continues until the ten-day clock runs and no additional offers have been made, at which time that's then the final offer that comes to council for consideration. At that time, you can say, yep, we're gonna sell it for that, or no, we're not. So, it's, yeah, it's the same, same process we've been, we've been discussing. So, it's, yeah, it's done by state statute.
And it can go as long as necessary until there are no more bids, so.
Does that, does it go ten days from the last bid? Is that how that works?
Every new bid hits the reset on the counter, on the day counter. Right. There is, in case you're wondering, there is a minimum bid increment, if you're familiar with minimum bid increments.
Right. Item number six in the resolution, um, in the staff packet, or in the agenda packet to be qualifying, uh, higher bid and upset bid must raise the existing offer or subsequent higher upset bid, but not less than ten percent of the first one thousand of the offer and five percent of the remainder of that offer.
The idea being that you can't stretch this out by bidding one dollar more than the next person. You have to raise it significantly enough, like eBay, right? I mean, everybody does eBay, right? At some point?
And, and, uh, Mr. Manager, the, uh, what we'll get, what we'll get is a dollar amount and the person, I guess, or, or is it just, just gonna be the dollar amount that, the final bid, when it comes back?
No, you'll, you'll know who that's from.
It's open and transparent.
And the dollar. Who's from and the amount, but that's it, though.
Yes, sir.
Not like the bid history or.
There's no, well, there's a reason we can't provide the bid history.
Okay.
Well, to be clear, the staff will manage the process of the bids.
Right.
Right. So, that could stretch anywhere from eleven days to a year, who knows, right? Until the bids are done. They'll take care of that. Once the bid process is done and we have a state legal bid on the table and the expiration counter's over, then the town manager will bring it back to us for consideration, if that helps answer your question.
Any kind of, I'm not sure you wanna do this or not, but any kind of special allocation to a certain part town or a certain thing, would, that would be discussed at the end, I guess, if, if it was, or is that, you know, would, would I might just go into the general fund? Whether.
Oh, you mean, where do the funds go?
Yeah.
The proceeds would, would go to the general fund and then, you know, if the council wants to make them available for appropriation, they could do that through a budget amendment.
Okay.
Traffic improvements? Might be something to discuss.
Traffic is our number one complaint.
All right.
In Apex, uh, that's always possible.
By like ten feet of road. Probably.
Um, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Discussion on the motion and the second to approve? All in favor indicate?
I just wanna say, I'm, I'm happy we've done these.
Oh, thank you.
I'm much more comfortable with the, initiating this with the zoning changes we've promulgated tonight.
Okay. Apologize, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, it was too, it was too, at the end there, no problem.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, that passes unanimously for approval. Um, so, Mr. Town Manager, there we go. Um, and if anyone has any questions about how to initiate, anybody who might be here tonight, certainly the town staff can help make sure that everyone has an opportunity to, um, put their bids on at the appropriate time. All right, that concludes old business. There is no unfinished business. We have now new business for approving or possibly approving the Lenmar Estates master subdivision plan at twenty-seven oh five Evans Road. Ms. Rayfield?
Good evening. Uh, this is the master subdivision for Lenmar Estates at twenty-seven oh five Evans Road, located over here in the central vicinity west of Kelly Road. Uh, the, I'm moving to here. This is the subject property. It is two point six-three acres. Um, it is currently zoned, medium-density residential conditional zoning. The twenty-thirty land use map recommends medium-high density residential. And I'll pull this up here to the overall site layout. Um, the property is surrounded by existing Belacasa development. Sorry. So, we have over here the manors at Belacasa, cottages at Belacasa. So, essentially, this is, um, an undeveloped piece, um, surrounded by that development. Back up to here. Um, the property contains a house that will be removed. Um, and, let's see, the applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on September twenty-first, two thousand sixteen. The neighborhood meeting report is attached. Um, RCA for the site is not required because it is a low-density development. Um, the project will extend existing public facilities. The Lenmar Estates subdivision is located in the Beaver Creek and Cape Fear River basins and will comply with the requirements of the UDO. Stage grading is proposed for the subdivision. I'll pull the grading plan for you. All proposed grading is related to the removal of the existing home, installation of the street infrastructure, utilities required for the project, and installation of erosion and permanent stormwater controls. Uh, the zoning conditions that were approved on March fifteenth, two thousand eleven with the rezoning are included in your packet, um, both the uses and the conditions. Obviously, there's no changes. Uh, buffers to the site. Uh, there is a thirty-foot type E street front buffer here, and then there is a ten-foot type B perimeter buffer for the remainder of the site.
Yeah, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
Uh, the E buffer along Evans Road, I thought that we had set up so that major roads, uh, our subdivisions abutting major roads would have a B buffer, not an E buffer. I'm, I'm very surprised about that, unless there's, isn't that correct?
It was two thousand eleven, was that the case in two thousand eleven?
Mr. Jensen, this subdivision was submitted before that UDO amendment change, and so it would not have to comply.
That's unfortunate because I think they should conform. Objective is to make the town higher quality, as high quality as we can and sticking E buffers along major roads where there's subdivisions. I've seen that enough. Unfortunately, I guess just, we'll see it one more time if that's what these folks wanna do. But, uh, you know, if they wanna put a high-quality subdivision in, a good buffer along the major road that that subdivision abuts to, especially with the backyards, is an important thing. So, I just, it, to me, this indicates the quality of what's gonna go in there possibly.
Okay, continuing. Um, it is under thirty units, so therefore it is fee-in lieu for parks and rec. It did not go to the advisory commission. Uh, it does, it is consistent with the Apex transportation plan. Access and circulation, essentially, um, all five lots, um, there are five lots. It gives us a density of one point nine units per acre. They will all be accessed here off of Milano Avenue. It will end in a cul-de-sac. Um, the proposed Lenmar Estates master subdivision plan is in compliance with the standards of the UDO and the approved zoning conditions. Planning staff recommends approval of the Lenmar Estates master subdivision plan. I'll be happy to any, entertain any additional questions at this point.
Can you show the aerial of the site?
Sure. One too many data.
So, essentially, all those trees along Evans are gonna be taken out. I mean, E is essentially nothing as of.
Well, they don't have to take them out, though. They can leave them. You don't, you don't have to have.
I guess you have the authority to do it, right? I mean, you don't?
You can, I think they, yeah, they can certainly increase and improve, uh, what's, what's, uh, required by the E buffer.
Mm-hmm.
But I would think that they would commit to something.
I noticed in the, um, I was looking at this in the general area, there's a greenway easement to the, on the right side of that. And just to be clear, there's no way, it would, they would connect, yeah, it's, it's on the right, the right side of this, um, of the screen. There, there's no way to connect back, the, the property lines are all, there's no like gaps in any property lines going this way in the development, right, or in the plan, right?
Right, making, are you asking as far as if making that?
It's land, it's landlocked. There's no way to get to the, to the east, um, through anything, right?
Right, everything's already developed, so there's no need for us to step out, I don't know, at this point, because essentially, everything else around it is developed.
You were talking about greenway access.
Well, yeah, I guess, yeah, I didn't, I didn't know, I didn't see the greenway easement. I didn't, I don't think it's been built yet, so, but they could go on the road, I guess, but, um.
Yeah, I mean, this is only two and a half acres, this whole parcel.
But, yeah, there's.
They could just come to Evans.
Yeah, the property line, though, is, they're, they're all, it's continuous along that road, right, uh, to the backside of this.
This?
All sides, I guess. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Bill, I think I'm with, I'm with you on this. I'd like to see a stronger buffer along Evans.
Well, you can only hope at this point.
So, I, we haven't seen a type E buffer, I don't think. Um, what's the difference for that and type A?
E buffer is the telephone pole about every hundred feet.
Yeah.
Not literally, just in case.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with that either.
We, we just have to be cautious, um, that if this master subdivision is compliant in every way to the rezoning conditions.
Should we ask the applicant or?
If they will voluntarily offer up a B buffer, he certainly may. But you just have to be careful.
Is there any input that anyone would like to provide? That would be, I guess, you?
Are you the applicant?
Are you?
I am the applicant. Would you like to answer?
Yes, yes, please.
Yes.
Yes, if, um, if, if I can characterize, I believe the request is along the main road, would you be willing to implement a B buffer instead of an E buffer?
Jeff Roach, Peak Engineering and Design. To answer the mayor's question, I will not offer a B buffer, Mr. Jensen, but what I will tell you is that this, and, and that's not a, that's not a global no, by the way. So, work with me for one second and I'll explain what's gonna happen.
Time's up. One.
I'm done. Can I get, no, I'm just kidding. So, Mr. Jensen, this is a different type of subdivision. It's not mass graded. It's a lot-by-lot grading. So, what's happening is the boundary for this property, which is lot one, is right here. This is all existing trees, and you can see the proposed landscaping that far exceeds a type E buffer. It doesn't get us to a B buffer, but I don't wanna go in there any more than I have to. That's why we left it like it was. Um, one of the other things is there was a neighborhood meeting in two thousand sixteen, which sounds really funny for this. We've been working with, um, the HOA at Belacasa for about a year and a half, trying to keep from clearing trees because of a pond. So, one of the things we are not upset about, but we've really done a lot, is you can see the perimeter buffers are very heavily planted or replanted or supplemented through here.
Those are only little circles right now.
No, no, well, there's existing trees there now.
Okay.
And, and we, in working with staff, we're not going in there to clear anything. They can't go into the buffer anyway, so it's a supplemental.
Yeah.
But we worked with all these property owners back here for, like I said, over a year, almost about fifteen months, trying to get this pond out of here so we could save even more trees on the site. So, to talk about landscaping in the back, something we've done, but to address your concern, these are, it's all wooded through here.
Okay.
We're not going in there, so, um, the reason it's an E buffer is because it was submitted back in two thousand sixteen, long before any changes to the buffer requirements. And it was easier just to leave it alone. The owner didn't wanna make any changes to the plan, and so instead, what we did is we just supplemented the planting instead.
I appreciate your clarifying that.
So, um, if there's any other questions, I don't remember there any other questions that I can answer, but thank you for clarifying that.
Well, she can sleep tonight, can't you?
And by the way, and by the way, just so you guys know, this corner lot here is about nineteen thousand square feet. I'm not sure the last time I saw a nineteen thousand square foot lot in a subdivision. These homes will match what's in Belacasa around it, so they'll be five plus when they start.
What's the minimum there, uh, square footage?
Uh, the lot, is the lot in the back is, uh, just, it's just over eleven thousand square feet.
Okay, so it's.
There's only five lots and they're all pretty big.
Almost quarter acre.
Yeah, they're, they're pretty big lots. So, I hope that answers your questions. I'm here to answer anymore.
You make me feel better.
Glad I could help.
It's rare treat.
With that, I'll sit down and let you guys.
All right. Okay.
I'm comfortable with that explanation, so I make a motion to approve.
Second. Yeah, I do, I do, it happens.
We have a motion and a second.
All right, so, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
I'm sorry, uh, was there a motion?
Um, yeah, I made the motion and Bill seconded.
To the second, okay, for approval?
Yeah.
Just for clarification. All right, thanks. I appreciate you catching me up. Um, we, we were, we were working on a matter of process, so, uh, is there any discussion on the motion for approval?
Eleven o'clock's coming up. We just have to hurry.
All right. Not hearing any discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, no.
No.
All right. Um, do you care to clarify?
Nothing.
All right. Just thought I'd give you the opportunity.
Thank you, though.
All right, that passes. Thanks.
Okay, last item on the agenda. We'll be out of here before eleven.
You will.
You will.
Yeah, you will.
Okay, so, uh, this is the Horton Park pods five through eight master subdivision plans. In case you're not familiar, Horton Park is located in the southeast portion of our jurisdiction. Here's the outline of the, um, of the entire PUD. For reference, the areas to be pla, uh, proposed for subdivision is mostly the southern half of the area, but due to the amount of infrastructure, roads, and utilities that are being installed, um, the entire boundary of the, um, of the subdivision is included.
Designed by the Republican voting district group?
Out of order, out of order.
All right. Moving on.
You'll have to answer that.
Yeah, so that, so the, uh, existing zoning district is planning a development conditional zoning with a little bit of rural residential to the site, to the edge here. Uh, they incorporated an additional parcel, um, mostly for stormwater and RCA purposes. As you can see, Jesse Drive is to the north, Colby Chase Drive is to the south. Twenty-thirty land use map designates the majority of the property and the area to be subdivided as.
as medium density residential. As you can see, the property is primarily vacant. It is bisected by the Colonial Pipeline as well as a couple of major stream crossings. So this is the layout which you actually got a preview of during the transportation plan amendments. And the area within Pods 5 through 8, which is actually a portion of Pod 5, is about ninety-nine and a half acres. And the proposed subdivision plan includes 223 single-family lots, forty-eight town home lots, four play lawns, in addition to the construction of two collector roads, improvements to Jesse Drive, and other off-site road improvements. Just another look at the proposed layout. So you have single-family here, proposed town homes in this location, and a single-family here with a major roundabout at the intersection of the north-south minor collector street and the east-west major collector street, which goes out to Smith Road. The required buffers that were approved in the PUD have been provided in the subdivision plan. In addition, the subdivision is meeting their RCA requirement, which is 21.63 percent. They are providing 21.77 percent RCA. I won't go through all the architectural standards that are included in your staff report. The elevations that have been presented do comply with those standards. Mass grading is proposed for the single-family portion of the development and, as I mentioned, they are meeting their additional RCA requirement for that. And they are providing their, in excess of the privately owned play lawn requirement. There are play lawns located here, one, two, three, and there's another one that always eludes me. Oh, yes, north of the townhomes, four, thank you, Jeff. It's a big subdivision. So those are the four play lawns distributed through the subdivision. In addition, there are three connections to the Middle Creek Greenway, which is actually included along the western boundary. The subdivision will be constructed with this subdivision. So there are three connections to that. Utilities will be served by extending existing water. A, the Middle Creek Regional Pump Station is being constructed in this location here. Plans are currently in review for that pump station and it will serve basically this whole basin.
Is that pump station town-funded or who's paying, who's doing it?
The developer of this subdivision is, is doing that, yes.
And the connections are the cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac and the main road?
So this is Colby Chase Drive at the bottom, so they are completing that gap in Colby Chase.
Sorry, it's a greenway connection.
Oh, the greenway connection. So there's a greenway connection here at the end of this cul-de-sac, off of this cul-de-sac. And I believe there's another one in this location, is that right? At the east-west collector. Okay. So with the transportation plan amendments that you approved earlier tonight, this subdivision is in compliance with transportation plan. And as I've, there are sidewalks on both sides of all streets within the subdivision and there are five road stubs provided in various locations, one, two, three, four, and five. In addition, Lot 51, I believe, is being reserved in the event that the Richardson parcel needs access. So planning staff did recommend approval of the master subdivision plan with the following two conditions. The Horton Park final plat cannot be approved and recorded until the Middle Creek Regional Pump Station is operational or the Town of Apex Water Resources Director or Designee has released the final plat for recreation. And two, Lot 51 shall be reserved for a possible connection point to the Alton Richardson property until such time, and I'll summarize, is either Carcellar Drive has been extended from the south or the north, excuse me, or the Alton Richardson property, which is generally located here, is approved for development with a connection to the Horton Park Drive. And the planning board also unanimously recommended approval of the master subdivision plan with the conditions presented by staff. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have one. And this may be a Russell question, but I'm going to direct it to you and let you defer if you want to.
Okay.
How does the southern half of the north-south road, south of the circle, not become a padstone? If you know what I mean.
What is a padstone?
Padstone Drive.
Padstone Drive has got a little bit of a recent reputation for being a straight shot of a minor street, miners' collector street. And there are regular reports of people driving either fast. And I'm not just saying just normal fast, I mean, like, these are people who are like passing on the left kind of thing in a residential area.
So I will say that there has been some traffic calming measures.
I'm sorry?
Is that Salem Village?
No, um, yeah, Salem Village, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
So along the north-south collector street, starting at Colby, on Colby Chase Drive, there is a mini-circle here, there is another one in this location, and another one here, and then you get to the major roundabout at this location. So there have been traffic calming measures.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, I can't see the mini-circles, they're too many, but...
Yes.
Many.
Too many minis.
That was not intentional. But that's good, thank you for pointing that out because that answers my question exactly. Thanks, Russell. You got out of that one, she covered you for that one.
He's very, so he knows things quiet.
Thank you, man, for real, for real, thank you. I appreciate that. Because I do have concerns, you know, that we don't want to continue perpetuating that. And I think those are the right kind of things to help. Just calm is good, you know? Don't need speed bumps, don't need stop signs. You can do something simple, just kind of let people take their foot off the gas a little bit.
We've also heard lots of trees helped calm.
That's right.
And now that you put that out there on padstone, now what do you have to do about padstone? You put that on the record?
Oh, no, they've been, there are already, we've had two studies, two traffic speed studies already out there at requests, right, Mr. Town Manager? At least one. We collected data for like a week or something. So, yeah.
The problem with Salem Village, too, the whole, the whole street layout was wrong. That's all.
Yeah, well, okay, great, thanks. You answered my question. I, I want to make sure we've not created another one and it looks like we've covered that. Any other, any questions from council?
You've asked, come on, thank you. Are we ready for a motion? Mayor? Are we ready for a motion?
If there is a motion.
Okay, I don't want to jump the gun.
If there, yeah, I don't hear anyone discussing, so make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say again.
Alright, we have a motion in a couple of seconds. Oh, we'll give that one to Brad.
No, he got the last one, I got this one.
That's alright, we alternate snake method. He gets this one again.
Again?
Yeah, you know how snake draft goes.
Man, I gotta wait two weeks for the next one.
Alright, any discussion on the motion for approval?
I appreciate the applicant preserving some of the family history that I've done here, too. I think it's pretty cool how the properties were assembled. I think we heard that story last time. Yeah, so I think it's pretty cool, so thanks for doing it.
Alright, thanks. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Alright, that passes unanimously. Thank you all for looking around. Having reached the end of new business and there's no other items except for a closed session for a personnel matter, I'll request a motion to go into closed session for a personnel matter.
Motion.
And the second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Alright, we're now recessed for closed session and let the public be advised that we will not have any further business to attend to after our closed session. Thank you.